From the closed session with a statement from City Attorney Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Earlier this evening, the City Council in the closed session to have labor negotiations with the groups and employees identified on the agenda, the City Council gave direction. There was no other reportable action taken.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn that meeting and go right into our regular City Council meeting for this evening, Tuesday, November 7th. Welcome, everybody. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Parker Saib from Meadows Elementary School. There you go. And there's your flag. And you can just stand right there.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
I think we got a preacher on our hands here, right? Well, Parker, thank you so much for doing that. We're very proud of you. And you've got a great fan club, not only your family. We know they love you, but you know, you've got a whole bunch of friends here as well. You want to recognize your parents and teachers and...
The principals right there, my teacher, a bunch of friends and family have came to come and watch me. It's very cool.
Well, that's great. So, so we're going to go ahead and have your teacher and...
Ms. Bloomberg.
Ms. Bloomberg, okay. Go ahead and say some words about...
Parker.
Parker.
Hi, everyone. Okay, I have the honor of introducing Parker Saib. I was Parker's fourth grade teacher, and I'm also now his fifth grade teacher. It's been such a pleasure to get to know him. Parker is thoughtful, compassionate, and a stellar student. Parker always gives 100% to everything he does. I asked his Meadows teachers to describe him, and we all share the same sentiments. Parker is kind-hearted, an avid learner, and a born leader. He comes to class every day with a positive attitude and a smile on his face. Parker, sorry, guys. I'm nervous. Can I hold the microphone for me?
Oh, sure.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, Parker shows score. Safe, kind, on task, responsible, and respectful behavior. Round both peers and adults by lending a helping hand at all times. He often helps manage our Chromebook cart by keeping things nice and organized. Parker loves to learn. He excels in all of his academics. He puts great effort into his work and always participates in class discussions. Parker's classmates are drawn to his calm and caring demeanor during group work inside and outside of the classroom. Our Meadows principal, Mrs. Chris Marzick, also agrees and shares that Parker is kind-hearted, displays excellent sportsmanship, and steps up into leadership roles at every opportunity. He is a wonderful role model for his peers. Speaking of his peers, some of whom are here tonight, they describe Parker as being caring, kind, smart, polite, helpful, thoughtful, funny, and athletic. Outside of the classroom, Parker enjoys playing for his club basketball and football leagues. He also comes from a family of Broadway performers and recently had the opportunity to perform alongside his dad and younger brother Finley. If you've ever met Parker's parents, Sala and Chad, you can easily see where he gets his friendly and all-in attitude from. Parker, they wanted to share this with you. Parker, we are grateful to be your parents, and our world is better and brighter with you in it. We love you forever. With that, Parker Meadows Elementary is so proud to honor you today. Congratulations.
So my recommendation is to hold on to that for college applications, because it'll really come in handy. Well, I also want to present you with a city pin, so you can go ahead and put it. And I like that blazer. We're about the same color here. And we'll, we'll go ahead and we'll put you right in the middle, and we'll have the City Council surround you.
We got David.
We have David Lesser up there, right over your, right over your shoulder.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Gotcha.
All right. Okay, and one more thing. We have a certificate of appreciation. Here we go.
Thank you.
For helping us this evening and for all the good work you do in the city, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay?
Impressive.
And you friends can learn from him, right? Now, you're all great kids. Thank you so much. All right. So we move on to the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can, can we do the roll call first?
For the five-hour meeting, too.
Oh, approval of the agenda, yes. Okay, so roll call vote?
Thank you. Roll call, Councilmember Haworth.
Here.
Councilmember Lesser. Councilmember Napolitano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Here.
And Mayor Montgomery is absent.
Okay, so next is the ceremonial calendar and...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can I make a statement first?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We received a request from Councilmember Lesser to attend the meeting remotely for due cause, and Councilmember Lesser has an additional statement to make.
Sure. I just want to acknowledge for the public that I am making a request to participate remotely under AB 2449 for just cause, because I have wondered the statute's definition, a contagious illness. I also require by the statute to disclose that there's nobody 18 years of age or older present in the room at the remote location. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, great. Thank you so much. And so now we move on to the ceremonial calendar, and we have the honor of having in our, at our council meeting today, the winners of the 2023 Fire Department Annual Home Escape Plan. And let me see, we'll bring them up. I guess we'll, we'll call Chief. We'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Tonight, we have our home escape winners. And I'm going to turn it over to Fire Marshal Bass and Inspector Susie Contreras.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. It has been our privilege in more than 17 years to host the winners of the Home Fire Escape Plan, and we have a short video, fun video showing part of their grand prize winning. Go ahead with the video, please. We are proud to say that we have five of the six winners present today, and if they can come up for the recognition from City Council and Mayor Pro Tem, first, we have Eva Orozco.
Hi, Eva. So nice to meet you. And then we have a certificate of appreciation as well. Well done.
Thank you.
Next, we have Amara Acharya.
Hi, Amara. How's it going?
Good.
Was that a heck of a ride on the, on the fire engine?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. So we have a city pin for you, and then a certificate of appreciation for your job. Well done.
Next, we have Serena Schaefer.
Hi, Serena.
Hello.
Hey, you did a great job.
Thank you.
There you go. So we have a city pin for you, Councilmember Napolitano, and a certificate of appreciation. Well done.
Next, we have Marco Federico.
Hey, Marco, how you doing? Good to meet you. Well done. So we have a city pin, and we have a certificate of appreciation for your great work there.
And next, we have Diego Beer-Breiken.
Diego, how you doing?
Good.
Well done. Did you, did you have fun drawing up the diagram?
Yeah.
Of your home? Did you get to jump out of a window or anything? You didn't? Okay. Well, here's your certificate of appreciation, and then Councilmember Napolitano has a pin for you.
Wow.
And then is there...
No, we only have five of the six.
Oh, five of the six here. Okay, great.
Wow, good job.
So, well done, everybody. What was your favorite part? The fire engine ride?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Oh, and the donuts, of course. Well, you can get donuts anytime, but you can't always get to ride on a fire engine, right? All right, great. Well, we're going to stand up here and have some pictures taken. I'll join you over here.
We're going to look at the woman in white standing right in front of us, okay?
Stand with your cheek.
All those chairs out of the way. All right. Lock another woman wide down the end. Look at them all.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Ready? One, two, three. Cheese. Gotcha. Thank you. Awesome.
All right.
Okay, well done. Well, these are the safest houses in the city. So if you're having a sleepover, you can rest assured, everything will be great. But it really is a serious subject, and I hope the kids, I mean, I remember my kids going through this how many years ago. So everybody really pay attention to it. Recharge your, your fire extinguishers at home.
Change your batteries.
And change your batteries, right. You're supposed to do that at daylight savings time as well, where you change the batteries of your smoke detectors. So you all, you all can go home and tell your parents to do that, okay? All right, great. Well, thanks again. Well, you can stay and run the meeting. All right, now we go to item E, which is the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances.
Yes.
Entertain a motion?
Aye, so moved.
Okay. Councilmember Haworth.
Second.
And Councilmember Napolitano, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Napolitano.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Haworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser.
Yes.
And Mayor Montgomery is absent. Motion passes.
Okay, going on...
Zero one.
Sorry. Going on to item F, City Council and Community Organization Announcements of Upcoming Events. One minute per person. Please state your name clearly for the record.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the teens of the community to a very exciting event next Tuesday, November 14th, from 4:00 to 5:00. Professional choreographer Teresa Smith will teach all about a variety of dances such as ballet, Charleston, and more, and registration is available on our website, lacountylibrary.org. I'd also like to remind the community that Manhattan Beach Library, along with other county library, county facilities, will be closed on Friday, November 10th, and Saturday, November 11th in honor of Veterans Day, and we will resume our usual business hours on Sunday, November 12th at 1:00 p.m. And finally, I would like to introduce you to our new lead adult services librarian, Lauren Wubbles. We're really happy to have her join the library team, and Lauren loves putting on programs, and I'm sure she'll become very familiar with all of the members of the community in no time. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Josh.
Thank you very much. I'm really happy to be here, and I'm very excited to start serving our wonderful community. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Andrew Enriquez. I'm your Patrol Operations Captain for the City of Manhattan Beach Police Department. I'm here for two community announcements. I'd like to invite the community to join us on Thursday, November 9th, between, wait for that flyer to come up. I believe it's 5:00 and 8:00, correct, between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. at Tin Roof Bistro. We partnered with the Special Olympics. Come out and have a meal and have your police department staff serve you, run your table for you, or greet you at the door when you come in. It's a fundraiser for the Special Olympic Athletics, where you're, we partner up with Tin Roof to, to serve and food there. My second announcement is for the following Thursday, November 16th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Jocelyn Center for our Town Hall Meeting. I welcome everyone to come out, and if you have questions ahead of time, please email askacop@manhattanbeach.gov. Thank you.
So November 9th, not, not the night to dine and dash?
Correct. At least not at Tin Roof.
And make reservations and get there early.
I was about to say that, yeah.
I highly recommend making reservations.
Right, great.
Thank you.
Can we ask for you by name for your table and your section?
You can. You might not get it, but you can.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Captain.
Hello, I'm Scott Janofsky, a Rotarian, and I want to announce that we have this Saturday Vet Fest. It's for first responders and veterans. We'll have beer and wine tasting, barbecue food, games for the kids. It's free for first responders and veterans. It's going to be exciting. It's our fifth year doing it. It's very exciting. It's a lot of fun, and I expect you all to be there.
And the Pine Mountain Logs are playing?
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Well, you know, only the best.
Only the best. Good show.
Thank you very much.
It is great food. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. I'm going to invite the community out. We have an exciting week ahead of us, starting with the Veterans Day Ceremony this Saturday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. We'll have the mayor kick us off. We have a wonderful keynote speaker. We'll have the Police Department Color Guard, MBMS Choir, and the Girl and Boy Scouts. So great event planned for the community. Please come out and join us, and that's at 15th and Valley. And then the next upcoming event will be the Beg Pool Community Open House. It's going to be Monday, the 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Manhattan Heights Community Center. Please share your input and priorities for the Beg Pool Facility. And if you're not able to make it, please join us. The QR code is right there. Take the survey online or through the city's website. Once again, Monday, the 13th for that. And then the last event, Wednesday, November 15th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., Peer Lighting and Holiday Open House of the Beach Cities Toy Drive Booth, MBMS, and Miracosta High School Choirs, Santa Sleigh, Strolling Carolers, food, entertainment, wonderful evening, so please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation Director Lehman. I also want to just make a quick announcement. The fire safety, the home, home escape plans, they're on display in the lobby area. So those children that you saw earlier, you can go ahead and see their winning pieces up there in the lobby.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, colleagues, and community members. My name is Amanda McLennan, and I am the Emergency Preparedness Administrator, working in the Fire Department. I'm here tonight to share that the city has started the process of updating the local hazard mitigation plan, and it's extremely important that we have the community stakeholders' involvement and feedback related to man-made and natural hazards in our area. So what is the local hazard mitigation plan? The Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies risks, vulnerabilities, as well as short and long-term mitigation strategies to protect the Manhattan Beach community, property, and environment. FEMA, the federal management, Emergency Management Agency, requires that cities have their local hazard mitigation plan updated every five years. Our current hazard mitigation plan is from 2019, so in May 24 is when we have to have it updated. And we invite all of you, all of our local stakeholders, to join us for our four Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee meetings, with the first meeting later this month on November 28th, and another in December on the 12th, and the final two in January on the 9th and the 30th. These meetings will be on Tuesdays from 9:30 to 11:30. It's important that we hear about your experience with local hazards, your concerns, as well as your ideas about hazard mitigation in our community. So there is QR codes. You can go to our website, go under the Fire Department, our social media. There are many ways to register for these meetings, and I strongly encourage you, your friends, your family, to get involved. The more people involved, the stronger our community's resilience. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? On Zoom?
We have David Archer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Franklin and City Council Members. David Archer, Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce. I'm here with a couple of announcements. First, we'd like to invite you all out to our Holiday Mixer Extravaganza on December 4th, that's a Monday, at Manhattan Village. This is our third annual for me, and so I'd like to invite all of you out, and the community as well, to join us. The second announcement is for the North Manhattan Beach Bid Holiday Stroll and Walkabout, which is Thursday, December 7th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7, or 9:00 p.m. It's always a wonderful event. The streets are full, the kids are laughing. We have Santa, Sleigh, Carolers, so we invite you to come out and join us there. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, please.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. We are Miracosta ASP representatives. Miracosta is busy at this time of the year. Here, we have some updates to share with you. Our recent homecoming dance and its accompanying game were a huge hit with the students and both, with the students and both events providing to continue the tradition of being a big success. An outside event that was heavily influenced by our student body was a Skechers Peer-to-Peer Walk. A huge portion of our students either walked virtually or in person, or even volunteered at the event, like our cheer team, for example. Moving on to our domestic extracurriculars, starting off with our drama slash tech groups. Their Peter Pan and the Star Catcher play has started and is ongoing until Saturday. It's been a big hit this year.
Hi, I'm Riley Jacobson, and I'm speaking for the Miracosta Model UM Program. Our Miracosta Model UM Program is currently on two travel trips, the first one in Montreal and the second one at Brown. These two are, these are very big debates that we prepare for the entire semester. These are four-day debates with highly competitive scholar students competing. Students have the opportunity to immerse in the culture. For example, at Brown, you can go and sit in at lectures, and in Montreal, they're touring the Old Town. Costa students like me are also going to compete in a two-day debate at UCLA, which is a very fortunate opportunity as well.
All right, thank you.
My name is Brody Intarian, and I'm also representing Miracosta's Associate Student Body. Moving on to our athletics, the fall season sports at Costa are nearing their end. Our new girls' flag football team has earned good crowds, and they've had great engagement from our student body, and they've proved to be a welcome success among our campus. Summing up our sports, we have 23 athletes signing to play in college in the gym at lunch on Wednesday, so be there. Moving on to the social side of our school, after recent antisemitism at MBMS, our students and faculty have put equality and respect at the forefront of our priorities, and have fostered a warm environment to all minorities and races, which we've seen great improvement on across the year.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Siobhan Ortiz. I'm from Miracosta, and I'm part of the All Cove Beach Cities Youth Advisory Group. And since All Cove Beach Days opened in November 2022, the center has welcomed more than 4,000 young people in, and about 50% of those have sought services. We've conducted more than 675 tours, presentations, and events locally, and All Cove, All Cove Beach Days has been a resource for Manhattan Beach schools through tabling, outreach, youth engagement, and staff support at MBMS and Miracosta. The center has partnered with MBPD and MBUSD to support juvenile diversion services as an alternative option for students experiencing law enforcement or school disciplinary actions. Additionally, All Cove has toured Manhattan Beach, Councilmember Joe Franklin, MB Parks and Rec, Manhattan Beach Police Department, and MBUSD leadership, counselors, and school psychologists. And it has also participated in MBMS Mental Health Awareness Month Resource Fair in May, and Miracosta's World Mental Health Day Resource Fair in October. Along with that, All Cove has equipped staff and parents during practice school night, offering free resources and services, and hosted parent tours for MBUSD parents to see the center for themselves.
I'm Jenna Leopard. I am also a member of the All Cove Youth Advisory Group, and I go to Miracosta. All Cove would like to invite everyone to our one-year celebration, which is coming up on November 18th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at All Cove Beach Cities at 514 North Prospect Avenue at Redonda, Redonda Beach on the fourth floor. The celebration is open to young people ages 12 to 25 and their families. There'll be live music and art show, jewelry making, other interactive activities, and raffle prizes, and did we mention free food? Help us continue to share about All Cove Beach Cities as a resource to the community.
Great. Well, thank you both very much. That's a great program.
Hard to believe it's been a year. I was there at the opening. Can't believe it.
Right. Anybody else here make an announcement? Anybody on Zoom?
There's no raised hands via Zoom.
Okay. Great colleagues, any announcements?
I actually just, I do want to announce, we got, somebody sent in an email, and I wanted to let the community know that check before you burn season is here again. All right, so each year from November through the end of February, residents of the South Coast Air Basin, of which we are residents, are asked to check before burning wood in their fireplaces to limit emissions of fine particulate matter. Smoke from residential fireplaces is a significant source of PM 2.5 during the winter months. So you can do their part, you do your part to improve air quality by choosing not to burn when a no-burn day is announced. And that gets announced by the South Coast AQMD. So there's an app, or you can check online, but you know, if you can check before you burn, it'll make a difference in our clean air. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. No? David? Okay. I just want to acknowledge that there was a terrific event held at the Jocelyn Center on October 25th. It was self-defense for older adults, and it was a joint venture between our Parks and Recreation Department and the Beach Cities Health District. I understand I wasn't here, but, because I was afraid, I didn't want to get hurt. And I heard it was well-attended, and I mean, like 50, 60 people there. So this was a trial run, and based upon feedback, we're going to go ahead and make decisions about conducting others. So to all who attended, thank you very much. The whole idea here is to make our older adults safer, feel more confident, and be able to do the right thing when they feel themselves in danger. So again, thank you, Parks and Recreation, Director Mark Lehman, and Tom over at the Beach Cities Health District. Okay, so moving on, if there's no other announcements, we have public comments, and I'm going to read this statement that has come to our attention, that people have been disrupting council meetings in other cities with antisemitic or racially-based comments through Zoom. Such comments are Such comments are disruptive and interfere with the people's business, and are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. I'm instructing the city clerk's office to mute any speakers who attempt to disrupt the meeting with antisemitic or derogatory comments based upon race, gender, or other protected categories. And also a reminder is, public comments, if you want to discuss something later on on the agenda, you only have one chance, one opportunity, either a public comments or when we discuss that item. So do we have anybody here who wants to make a public comment?
Hello, Kristi Hogan, longtime resident and business owner in town. My opinionated, talkative, and handsome husband can't be here tonight.[648.54][648.54](laughing) He has a good excuse, he's at a rotary event, but he did ask me to come down and call your attention to the email that he sent you, where he was opposing your decision to join the Whittier lawsuit. That's the lawsuit that challenges Los Angeles County's bail schedule, and specifically elimination of cash bail for nonviolent misdemeanors in that short time between arrest and an arraignment before court. So please read Mike Jenkins's email that was setting out the reasons why he thinks you should reconsider the decision. And as long as I'm here, I thought I'd give you my opinion as well. And honestly, I was surprised when I looked at the video and the staff report, because you all voted for the lawsuit without any analysis of the validity of the legal claims that you were giving Manhattan Beach taxpayer money to support. A court had already determined that it's not fair and likely unconstitutional for people without money to sit in jail awaiting their arraignment, while people with money sit at home awaiting their arraignment, even though they were accused of the same nonviolent misdemeanors. You decided to vote without any kind of legal analysis. But more than that, as I saw the tape, our police chief and nobody on our public safety staff recommended that you join the lawsuit. So there was no information, and if you had asked them, they would have had to tell you that there's absolutely no evidence that there's an increase in public safety if you keep nonviolent misdemeanor-accused individuals in jail pre-trial or pre-arraignment. So you were willing to vote without having them weigh in. And I was worried to see you cast those votes so perfunctorily, without asking questions like, would this actually help the city if we prevailed in that lawsuit? And I mean, if you hold yourself out as a fiscal conservative, then the vote was embarrassing because you would be in the same position, the city would be in the same position whether or not you spent that $10,000. And if you hold yourself out as someone who's concerned about law and order, it's also kind of embarrassing, because the evidence doesn't show that this challenged policy has any significant impact on public safety, so that's just barking up the wrong tree. I know you work hard. I know you think hard. I know you read a lot of things before you make decisions. I just want to emphasize that you have to do that for every vote, because even when you think you're just jumping on a bandwagon, there are impacts, and I wish you had gone the other way on this one, too. So thank you for your service and for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council, my name is Hildy Stern, I also am a long-term resident of Manhattan Beach, I'm also the Chair of the South Bay Community Coalition Against Hate. I'm here to ask you to reconsider a decision that you made at your October 3 council meeting. The item was the Parks and Rec's Director's Report on Department Projects, and it included a list of 10 new art projects proposed by the Cultural Arts Commission. One of the, one of the projects in those proactive art projects, one of those 10 projects was a community mural proposed by LA vs. Hate. I'd like to re, you to reconsider your decision recommending that there was no further action on that LA vs. Hate community mural, because I felt like when I listened to your comments, there was like very little information given, some of your comments indicated that you might not have understood what that project was. So I sent you a letter that kind of outlined a little bit more information, and I just wanted to highlight a few things. First, LA vs. Hate is a program that is, it's a county program, supported by the LA County Commission on Human Relations. It provides a broad range of services for all of the communities in LA County. It gives support for victims of hate, data collection, reporting, training, and it's helped even our community here in Manhattan Beach. They've reached out to our police department to assist in responses to incidents of hate. They partner with Task Force, which creates all of their creative assets, and you've seen some of those assets in the signs around town, supporting, supporting Unity Against Hate Acts. So the mural project that was proposed through LA vs. Hate is a 100% community-based project. They invite residents in Manhattan Beach to attend several community mural workshops to get feedback from the community about what they would like to see in some of these public art projects. They make sure that all the members of our community participates, they listen to the input from the community, they bring that to the artist, and the artist will then bring back a rendering of what they think is a representation of the cultural importance in Manhattan Beach. So the process that LA vs. Hate goes through is exactly the type of mural project that you are looking for when you set your parameters for a public art project. It requires limited staff time, because Task Force and LA vs. Hate would lead the development and installation, it fully engages the community through their workshops, and it will reflect, reflect the culture and values of Manhattan Beach. So what you see here are examples of these beautiful uplifting messages of unity and understanding, which our community could really use right now. So I'm hoping that during council requests, that one of you will request that the LA vs. Hate mural project be added back to the Cultural Arts Commission's proactive art projects, and that you will ask for more information so that you can consider if this is something you would like to institute in Manhattan Beach. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Apparently, we didn't get anything right last minute.[1035.42][1035.42](laughing).
It happens.
Anybody else in chambers? How about online? Zoom?
There's no raised hands via Zoom.
Okay. So we'll move on to Agenda Item J, where we're going to recess this regular city council meeting of November 7, and convene the Capital Improvements Corporation meeting.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we have the consent calendar.
Consent calendar first.
Oh, I'm sorry, consent calendar.
Item H.
Yeah, so items removed from the consent calendar?
There was nothing removed.
Yeah.
So just approval of the consent calendar?
Yeah, approval of the consent calendar.
I, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Oh, second.
Second.
Show I have a pulse.
Aww.[1093.15][1093.15](laughing).
Row call, please.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoehrwirth?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser? Motion passes 401.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's patience, as well. Okay, so now at this time, we're going to recess the regular city council meeting of November 7, 2023, and convene the Capital Improvements Corporation meeting.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Just as, as part of this, I saw, I read a question, one of the surveys that we have as to what this means, maybe the city manager can give an overview of what the Capital Improvements Corporation is. I know we know what it is.
So the Capital Improvements Corporation actually was formed many years ago as a mechanism for us to finance capital improvements in the city of Manhattan Beach, and some of those include the Fire Station Number One, Fire Station Two, which is about to open, and some other improvements.
City Hall.
I believe.
City Hall was one of those.
City Hall, right, that was probably the first project. And so it's a separate body, it's a financing mechanism, as I say, and you, as the council members, are the board of directors for the Capital Improvements Corporation. So that is why we adjourn the council meeting, convene the Capital Improvements Corporation, have you act as the board of directors, complete the business, and then adjourn that meeting, and come back to the council meeting and reconvene.
And typically involves purchasing bonds or such to fund?
Exactly.
These projects.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so City Clerk Tamora, row call?
So just to clarify, this is a standard protocol staff report, and the reason it's on here is because the Conflict of Interest Code is being amended, and so the Capital Improvements Corporation has different bodies than the council members. So as you are board members, Vice President and President, instead of Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. Boardmember Hoehrwirth?
Yes.
Boardmember Lesser?
Yes.
Boardmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Vice President Franklin?
Here.
And President Montgomery is absent. Motion passes 401.
Okay. And so we conduct public comments at this time for the Capital Improvements Corporation Anybody want to make a public comment on it? And, okay. City Clerk Tamora, can you provide the staff presentation?
Staff?
Or who's, who's providing that?
There's no staff.
Yeah, there, this is the, the adoption of the Conflict of Interest Code.
Oh, okay.
The same one that the council adopted.
You can adjourn.
On the consent calendar.
Okay, so that would be...
You might want to check if there's anyone on Zoom who wants to comment.
Yeah, is everybody on Zoom wants to comment?
There's no raised hands via Zoom.
Okay.
You can adjourn it now.
So we're going to adjourn this meeting?
Well, do we, we need to adopt a resolution, right? We haven't, we have not adopted.
We did attendance, okay, so.
Okay, yeah.
Correct.
Right, okay, sorry, sorry.
So I will second that.
Okay. So I made a motion to adopt the resolution of the new Conflict of Interest Code.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion by, what is it?
Board member?
Board member, uh...
Hoehrwirth?
Hoehrwirth, and second by Boardmember Napolitano?
Yes.
We have a, row call?
Boardmember Lesser?
Yes.
Boardmember Hoehrwirth?
Yes.
Boardmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Vice President Franklin?
Yes.
President Montgomery is absent. Motion passes 401.
Okay, thank you. And at this, this time, we adjourn the Capital Improvements Corporation meeting and reconvene the regular city council meeting of November 7. Okay? So call, call this meeting to order, and a row call? Oh, no, I'm sorry, we...
We're just back to the council.
Yeah, we already did, okay, so we're...
We're on item 21.
We're on, item number K, item letter K.
Public hearings.
Public hearings.
Yeah, item 21.
Right. So item 21 is conduct a public hearing for the storm drain fee increase and tabulate the protest notices. Finance Director Sherrillian, and there you are.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, members of the City Council, Steve Sherrillian, your Finance Director. Before I turn this over to Controller Julie Bondarchuk to give a brief presentation, just wanted to let you know that the entire team is available tonight. We've got Legal here in the, in the council chambers, as well as on Zoom, we have Public Works Director Lee, as well as the entire finance team to answer any of your questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Julie. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin and members of the City Council, my name is Julie Bondarchuk, Financial Controller for the city. Tonight's public hearing is to consider a proposed increase to the storm drain fees. The goal of the public... The goal of the public hearing is to determine if a majority protest exists for the proposed increase in the storm drain fee. If there is no majority protest after tonight's meeting, then City Council can consider approving a resolution to proceed with a special ballot election. Tonight, we are also going to go over a brief summary of the storm drain fee, the impact to the general fund, the timeline, as well as the, at the conclusion of the public hearing, City Clerk Tamora will give us the final tabulation for the protest notices. The storm train, the storm drain fees have not changed since 1996, with single-family residences paying a fixed rate of $19.12 a year. This generates approximately $350,000 annually in revenue, in revenue to the fund. Approximately $2.2 million is needed each year just to fund operations in the current projects listed in the five-year CIP plan. Based on recent analysis from the city's contracted engineering firm, Harrison Associates, an average annual fee of $129 is needed to fund existing operations and projects. In recent forecasts, the general fund projected depleting reserves driven by outgoing subsidies. Policy reserves are meant to be used in emergency situations or as a temporary funding source. Not meeting policy reserves may potentially impact the city's credit rating if not addressed in the long run. The general fund has provided the Stormwater Fund with $6 million in subsidies over the last four years, and another $11.4 million in subsidies is projected over the next six years. Ongoing subsidies may compete with general fund services if reserves are completely depleted. This slide depicts the timeline of how we got to this point today. On March 14, 2023, an item for revenue enhancements was added to the city council work plan. Since then, we have had two city council meetings and three finance subcommittee meetings. Tonight's public hearing would be the sixth time, that the, sixth time that the potential storm drain fee increase has been discussed in a public meeting. The property owner protest notices were mailed on September 22, 2023, and an e-notification was sent on September 27 to registered users. Lastly, notice of the public hearing was published in The Beach Reporter on October 19 and October 26. If no majority protest is received tonight, City Council can decide to proceed with a special ballot election after the public hearing. The slide shows the earliest potential timeline for the special ballot election, with ballots mailed on November 17, and a ballot deadline of January 5, 2024. The only requirement is to have a minimum of 45 days between the ballot mailing and the ballot deadline. After the ballot deadline, a date is set to tabulate the ballots in a public space. After the ballot tabulation, staff will then return to City Council at a later date with the results of the election. A simple majority vote in favor of the fee increase is needed to pass this measure. As of November 6, 2023, a total of 1,562 protests were received. 6,506 protests are needed to establish a majority protest, which is 50% of the 13,012 notices mailed. At the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, City Clerk Tamora will announce the total number of protests received. At that point, if there is no majority protest, City Council can consider approving Resolution 23-0149 to call for a special ballot election, set the ballot deadline and ballot tabulation date, and adopt procedures for the election. So this concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I think this is more of a question, it might be for Bruce, it might be for you, and I, so I saw the slide that said this is the earliest timeline that we could follow, which was, I believe, November 17, and, and then a 45-day would be January 5. I think, I think Bruce, you, you and I talked about this, so if we wanted, you said we, it's the earliest, what does that mean? Because it's, it's, you know, tell me what, what, how, how can we change it? Isn't that...
So the law requires a 45-day period.
Okay.
The period we've provided for in the staff report is closer to 60-day period, but frankly, I think we would benefit from extending the due date of the ballots, probably another 10 to 12 days, which would allow us time to get more information out to the community on what the factual needs are for this, this fee increase.
Because it does, I mean, here we are, November, is it 8th today?
7th.
7th, sorry. Yeah, I mean, and it, we're going into the holiday season, so if we extend, we, we have the ability to extend a timeline. to extend a timeline?
We do.
So that way people could, you know, calm down after the holidays, you know, go on their diets, go to the gym for two weeks. But we would have, they might have a little more time when they could pay attention if we extended it by a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Member Lesser?
My question was exactly the question that was asked by Council Member Howarth. I wanted to confirm the timeframe, because it was listed in the PowerPoint, looking down in my notebook. But I think you just answered the question that we have the ability to allow more time for residents to vote on this measure, correct?
That is correct.
Is there a recommendation as to what that timeframe would be to achieve what Council Member Howarth just indicated, which is allowing a little more time for the public, particularly after the holidays?
Yes, I believe adding ten to twelve days onto the existing timeline has been presented. In other words, have the deadline for the ballots January seventeenth, and then have it come back to the council at the first meeting in February, which would be February sixth. I think that would give us an adequate amount of time to prepare the factual materials with some outside help from a consultant on that, to make sure we're getting the messaging across clearly and concisely before people have a chance to fill in their ballots.
From a process standpoint, the first thing we need to do is count the protest votes, correct? And then we could get to this discussion of the mailing ballots, correct?
That's correct.
Joe? Okay. Council Member Napolitano?
Thank you, Honor. Just a couple of questions. Maybe I should save my rhetorical ones. Well, I'll ask you, is there a perfect time, Mr. Going on? Is there a perfect time for an election?
I doubt it.
In terms of that, though, why aren't we putting this on a regular ballot with, say, in the March with the state primary? Because my understanding is that because this needs to be mailed to, it's a vote of the property owners.
Correct.
That it can't be something just that's on the ballot.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, because it's not something that the general public is going to vote on, it's property owners are going to vote on.
And it's one vote per parcel.
One vote per parcel?
Yes.
And so because of that, it's a mail-in ballot?
Right.
And there, it certainly is a mail-in ballot that needs to be separate than the general election. If we were to push it off to March, it would likely be lost in the shuffle of all the other things going on, the election, the general, the primary election going on at that time.
Yes, that was part of the consideration.
And if we pushed it to the spring or summertime, there's spring vacation, there's summer vacation, school's out, people are out. If we push it to fall, school has started. If we push it to wintertime, there's holidays. So there's no perfect time to do this.
Yes, you're correct.
And it has to be separate from a regular ballot where people mail in now but can also show up at the polls. It has to be separate from that, because this is only to the property owners.
Only to the property owners, yes.
Okay, just want to make that clear. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Honor.
I have a follow-up question. Excuse me, when my colleague, when my councilman, why can't I speak tonight? When Council Member Lesser was asking his question about the timing, you said something about February. Are you suggesting to extend the window out to February?
No, well, the council will take the final action on-
I see.
But the ballots would be due on January seventeenth.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's what I thought I heard you say to me, and then that's all fine. Okay, and again, to the process, we'll open it up for public comments, but we have to hear from the clerk how many protest votes there are. If we don't have six thousand five hundred and six protest votes, then we can talk about-
Next steps.
Next steps, thank you.
Okay. So we mentioned the January seventeenth ballot deadline, and when was the ballot tabulation to start?
Well, the ballots can be submitted anytime after tonight, once they're mailed out, and then it would be accepted up through January fifth, as it was originally proposed. I'm suggesting that we move that date to January seventeenth to allow a little more time for the balloting, for information to be disseminated.
Okay, and then can you just describe again the ballot tabulation process?
Yes, the ballot tabulation will be handled after the deadline, so the following week, similar to the current one that we proposed, our preliminary was on the fifth, and then we were going to start the tabulation on the eighth until it was done in a public area, so it's accessible by the public. So this would be, you know, we'd have to work with the city clerk and the team, but it'd be sometime probably the following week.
Okay, the week of the twenty-second of January.
Correct.
Okay.
Or thereabouts.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, council members?
Not really, no.
Public comments?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Stefan Kamp, I think you guys know me. Bruce, I love what you just said, which is how we get the information out. I mean, information helps intuition. So could you talk a little bit about how we would get the information out so people are educated and able to make a good decision?
City Manager Ma?
Yes, our plan is to do direct mailing and probably some advertising in the local media, and some social media, and the usual outlets that we use for any news that the city puts out. And again, I want to stress the fact that this will be factual information. The city, as you all know, is not allowed to be a proponent at city taxpayer expense to take a position on a particular initiative. And so our goal and our legal requirement is to put out factual information as to why this fee is needed, and let the voters make the decision.
And like, what it will be used for, and, but it's impartial.
Partial, correct.
Right.
Okay. Anybody, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hi, I'm Chris Davis. This isn't about the actual special election. There has been someone putting around a newsletter against this, and they're claiming that the Measure W funds should be paying for this. And I haven't been able to find anything either way. Do we apply for Measure W funds as part of a way to pay for this? So this is in addition to whatever we're getting from Measure W that we apply to the county for, is that correct?
We'll answer that.
We'll get it answered if that's your question. Is that the only part of your question?
That was it. I just, I don't want anyone spreading around things, getting everybody all worked up.
Bless you.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to get the answers, you know, from the horse's mouth, as it were. Thank you.
Good question. Who wants to answer that? It's a good question.
Hello, so the Measure W is accounted for in a separate fund just for accounting purposes?
Let's clarify, Measure W is a countywide-
It is a countywide, it is currently on the property taxes as a countywide tax. So that is for us, we get about four hundred thousand dollars a year on that, and we count for it in a separate fund. However, our consultants did take into both funds, both Measure W funding and our stormwater funding as aggregate when determining the fee and what funding is required to-
So the breakdown of that is that we get about four hundred thousand dollars a year from Measure W funds. They don't come close to covering the costs of our stormwater needs and the infrastructure projects we have, and then all the reporting we have to do and everything like that. So the additional money that is going to pay for those things are subsidized from the general fund, which means it's taking dollars away from parks and reg, from what could be used for police or fire or other services. So if that, as that increases over time, because the costs increase over time, the subsidy has to increase over time if we don't address it through an increase in the stormwater fee.
That is correct.
Looks like our Director Lee was-
And if we didn't have Measure W, then the fee increase would have to be even larger.
Right.
Right.
And we apply for all the grants we can for Measure W. But they're competitive, we don't get everything we ask for.
I think the Director wants to speak. Mr. Mayor, you got a call.
Public Works Director Eric Lee, as it relates to grants from Measure W, yes, the largest grant we have currently on the books right now is seventeen point six million dollars from the county, comes from the countywide assessment. And so that's in addition to the four hundred thousand that Controller Bonderchuk just mentioned.
And how many miles of city-owned storm drains do we have? I read it the other day, so I'll help you. Eighty-one. There's eighty-one miles.
I might have wrote that the other day, I just don't remember.
I read your report. I just want to prove I read the report, so there's eighty-one miles of Manhattan Beach owned storm, but there's also county-owned storm drains, and our money doesn't go to theirs. Ours would go just to ours.
That's great. Can I ask about, while you're standing there, but-
You want to?
Yeah, I know, right? No, and I, but I appreciate the question, because, yes, Measure W funds can go to stormwater, you know, cleaning the stormwater, but it's not enough. So it's, right, it's just, it's, if we're starting at nineteen dollars in nineteen ninety-six, you know, it's just, we have not kept up.
We wish it would cover it all.
Yeah, for sure.
But it's a countywide, so it goes to all communities.
Yeah.
We get a per capita basis, we get a certain amount.
And it's not enough.
On a per capita, and it's not enough. And the idea that this is a double tax is incorrect. First of all, this isn't a tax, it's a fee. A tax generates revenue that we can spend on anything. A fee goes to cost recovery for the cost of providing the service, and that's what this is, it's a fee, not a tax. And the, sorry, Eric. But, you know, in terms of what Measure W covers, it does not cover that. It wasn't meant to cover. If it were to cover all of our needs, it would cover all cities' needs everywhere. It doesn't. It doesn't come close.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Happy.
Okay, any more comments, questions?
I'm surprised I can get anything in Manhattan Beach for under twenty dollars.
I'm Terry Bavero, and I have a simple question, was, do you have to, do you guys need to vote each time you raise the fee? I mean, kind of, the stuff came out, it's kind of ambiguous whether you could raise the fee just because you want it, you know? So you have to vote each time?
It goes to a vote of the people.
Yeah.
Under Prop two eighteen.
Property owners?
That's why, yeah, property owners. It goes to a vote of the people, that's why it hasn't been raised since nineteen ninety-six.
Right.
And so it goes to vote of the people, and it has a CPI increase built into it, so we don't have to go to a vote every time going forward. But the city council can't willy-nilly raise it ourselves in the future unless there was a vote of the people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I doing okay?
Yeah. Want to switch seats?
No, no.
No, okay.
Trying to keep it moving.
Anybody else? Public comments?
Maybe Zoom?
Zoom?
There's no raised hands via Zoom.
Okay. Council discussion?
At this time, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and tabulate the votes.
We have someone coming in late, I don't know if he wants to speak to us.
No, doesn't look like it.
Okay. Yeah, tabulate the votes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The total number of protest votes received is one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight.
And what needs to-
Sixty-five, you need-
Received to qualify?
The fifty percent is six thousand five hundred and six. Okay. So now, Mr. City Manager, Attorney, we could now have our discussion now about approving or not this resolution.
Correct.
And just to clarify what the city manager said, no city funds can be used ultimately if you do approve this resolution or deny the resolution, but you can certainly give your views as to why you're in favor of the resolution. And later on, and we'll see what happens with this resolution, but we'll provide more information as to the dos and don'ts of what council members can do with regard to supporting this ballot measure or opposing it. And once again, the key is no city funds, but we'll amplify that later.
Sure.
And I might add that if you do in fact opt to use the dates, and I'm suggesting we need to modify the resolution or amend it-
Amend it.
Before you adopt it.
The-
The resolution needs to be amended before you adopt it, if you change the date.
Oh, change the dates, yes.
If we change the timeline.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and we can simply do that in the motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be section four.
Okay, Council Member Napolitano?
Thank you, Honor. And I'm repeating myself, I gave a long, slow, quickly last time about this, I'll try and make it brief, but this is necessary. Nobody up here wants to raise fees or taxes or go ask the public for a lot more money. We know things are tough out there. And, but things are tough in here too, when it comes to this particular fund, because it hasn't been raised since nineteen ninety-six. I was on council in nineteen ninety-six when we set this. And then Prop two eighteen froze anything without a vote of the people. We thought, okay, we can handle this for a while. It's subsidized a little bit by the general fund, and I'll tell you, a lot has changed since nineteen ninety-six. I don't know who's paying the same or less for anything since nineteen ninety-six, I'm certainly not. But we aren't either, certainly not with the stormwater fund. And you have to imagine that over the years, not only are the costs gone up because of labor costs and everything else, but just the mandates that Sacramento has put on us and the national mandates for clean water. And that's what really this is, this is about clean water. The number one thing we hit on every survey is that people want to make sure that the ocean is clean offshore here, so that it's attractive to our visitors, attractive to ourselves. But to do that, it takes investment, and it needs replacing of the storm drains we have, we're installing new catch basins to catch trash before it goes out in the ocean. We want to maintain those A grades from heel to bay and others. And to do that, it takes money, and the costs are not the same, the reporting requirement's not the same, everything is exponentially more than it was back in nineteen ninety-six. And so this is one of those things that we don't want to do, but it's necessary to do. And, but we're not doing it. We're going out to ask the people to do it, and we're asking the people to prioritize clean water and treatment of storm water before it goes into the ocean, and capturing trash and all these things that we want to do that are good for the environment, good for our city, and good for our economy. And so that's the necessity with going and asking for this. The average price, as we've seen, is going to be a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per year, not per month, per year, whereas it's nineteen dollars right now. We've had a bargain for many years. Arguably, it'd still be a bargain if this passes, and we need it to pass, because if we don't, we're going to keep subsidizing it through the general fund. And the argument could be, well, that's partly what the general fund's for. But you know what? At a certain point, there's a tipping point where it's just too much out of that general fund, and it starts eroding the other things that we want to do, it undermines the things we want to do. And we're going to see, and we had a presentation on this with our budget, you're going to see our reserves go down because of it. And once those reserves go down, then we're tapping into reserves that we have for emergencies, and we don't want to tap into that. And if we don't tap into those things, if we want to maintain triple-A bond rating and things like that, then it affects the services we provide, and that means we have to do budget cuts for the things we already enjoy, and we can't expand on the things that people want expanded. You want more cops, it takes money. You want more firefighters, it takes money. You want cleaner parks, it takes money. It all takes money. We've got exponentially increasing rates for trash collection, for street sweeping. We've seen that in street sweeping just recently, all the mandates on them now for power washing, which is on the agenda tonight, too. Nobody likes to increase costs on residents, no, no. No one sitting on this side of the dais wants to do that. Sometimes we have to ask, and sometimes we have to, and in this case, we have to ask. So that's what we're doing, we're asking, we will be asking the residents to support this so that we can maintain our fiscal strength, keep our ocean clean, and really address a problem that's been kicked down the road a long time, and it needs to be addressed. And we either pay now or we pay more later. Thank you, Honor.
Hey, great, thank you. Council Member Howarth?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My colleagues said it all very well. It is in addition to, in addition to mandates, we talk about federal and state mandates about, you know, what can be actually put into our oceans and how clean the water needs to be. There's also more people, right? And it's not just about Manhattan Beach, it's the people who live east of us, right? I mean, the water comes to the sea, we have to clean all of that. And so, you know, it travels on our streets, it travels- And so, you know, it travels on our streets, it travels all, you know, and it ends up here. So this is really something that has to be done. We all value the clean ocean, and it's not just something that we like to say, it's, you know, a lot of our economy comes from our beautiful beaches and our beautiful ocean. So this is an investment not only in the quality of the ocean life, our business economy, and the quality of all of our lives. I was really glad you asked your rhetorical question about, you know, why can't we do this in the March primary? You know, you can't. You know, we mail this to property owners, and only one vote per property, so my husband and I will have a vigorous debate about it, I'm sure, and I'll win. But it's, the Prop, and I think Mr. Bavaro, you know, came up to ask about, well, could you guys just raise it again if you voted? And no, that's what a Prop 218 vote does, it puts these decisions in the hands of the people. And for all the years that I was on council before, every single budget cycle, we would watch the subsidy go over to the storm drain fund and, or stormwater, and we would all sit there and say, someday we're going to have to do this, but we didn't, it's hard to find the political will, as Councilmember Napolitano said, nobody wants to do that, right? So I'm very proud to be on a council where there appears to be the political will, because this is absolutely critical for our future. I would like to, I know we've got a few other comments, but I'd like to make a motion which doesn't preclude the other comments, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, or Protem, Mr. Mayor Protem, not yet. And I would, I like the idea of amending the timeline, because, you know, if we were to mail it the Monday, I believe, like after Thanksgiving, and then have him be due on January seventeenth, I think that's, it's better for the public, because people can pay more attention to the information. Everybody's pretty busy in December, and I want people to have enough time to digest any information, get more information, come to us, and I hope that we will provide really good, clear information. Stuff like, and I don't know, you know, I'm no legal expert, so I don't know if this is allowed, but how much we've been paying, what it costs us to subsidize. Councilmember Napolitano brought up, you know, we'll have to start, because we've been subsidizing with the general fund, what people don't realize, and he says, cut services, you know, that's public safety, that's all these things, right? And so I hope we can really make those points in our factual information. So I would want to adopt the resolution with amending the timeline to extend to January seventeenth, and that will be my motion. Adopt Resolution 23-0149, and setting the ballot deadline to January seventeenth, and adopt procedures for conduct of election. That's my motion.
And if there's a second?
Okay.
I just want a clarification, but I'll wait for a second.
Okay.
I'll second.
I was waiting for Councilmember Lesser, if you wanted to weigh in. I'll second.
Yes. That's all.
I can add very little to what my colleagues said, I'm fully in support of adopting Resolution 23-0149 as amended with the revised timeframe and the opportunity for the city staff to get out more factual information. We're already seeing so much inaccurate information. This, again, is a fee that was set in nineteen ninety-six and has been fixed. Prior councils have simply not brought this measure to the people to vote on, to the property owners. And as a result, that's why there's such a large differential, as our costs have gone up and the infrastructure has aged. So I'm fully supportive of moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll bring the comments to a close. We're very blessed to live by the ocean. I just took a trip out of the country, and people know about Manhattan Beach all over the world. And what a great place it is, a beautiful place. But with that privilege comes an obligation to keep it clean. And we sweep the streets probably more than we need to, I think by state mandate, we do it more. Part of that is so that we can capture the dirt and materials before it goes into the storm drains. But materials are going to go ahead and get into that storm drain system. It's our obligation to the environment, to be stewards of this environment, to keep the ocean water as clean as possible. I think that's one of the things, those of us that live here and visit here and live on the beach, you sort of have that innate desire, it's in there, to stoop down and pick up, you know, pick up some trash, because you know it's going to lead to the, you know, to the storm drains, and has a possibility of going out there. So this intricate network of, how many miles?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one miles, thank you.
Great, such a good fact.
You know, is built for that purpose, and it needs to be taken care of, it needs to be upgraded, it needs to be maintained, and we can't do it on the pressure and on the back of our general fund. So think of it as an investment, you know, in our properties, in our infrastructure. I was watching something today, and it talked about the tourism, the value of tourism each year to the Los Angeles area, and it's thirty-two billion, that's thirty-two billion with a B, every year. And we get a good portion of that, okay? And part of the reason is because our ocean and our beaches are so well-maintained. So I echo, no one likes to raise fees, but I think in this case, it's necessary. So with that, we have a motion and a second.
So Mayor, just a clarification, I mentioned Section Four, but also the title of the resolution, where it says January fifth, that'll be changed pursuant to this motion, if it's adopted, to January seventeen.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I proposed. Cool.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Horwitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Montgomery's absent. Motion passes four zero one.
Can I, Mr. Mayor Protem, can I ask a clarifying question of the city attorney? May I?
Yes.
You're going to get us sort of a list of, you know, I want to be very technically correct in what I can do legally, but I know that, for instance, we all tonight voiced our support, and that's allowed, because we're voting on a motion. But going forward, we can't make comments from a future council meeting saying, hey, has everybody voted? We want you to, well, we can say, but have you voted for this? We want you to vote for this. We can't say that in a city hall meeting.
Well, so for the most part, you can give objective facts, and so everyone's...
We could say, deadline is January seventeenth, turn in your ballots.
Right, and so I'll give you a lot more clarification.
Thank you.
Now that this resolution has been adopted, as to the do's and don'ts.
Thank you.
And once again, it's city money, and so on your own time, you can do whatever you want to oppose it or support it. And there are things that you can say and what the council can do.
Great.
That doesn't cost money.
And if I could also just clarify something about the postmark, that, you know, getting these in?
No.
Not that I'm a procrastinator, but for the ballots, wasn't it, it has to be in, or?
It's a good point.
Yeah, I actually never looked at that question, typically...
There was something.
There's been new rules on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
You can, as long as it's postmarked, yeah.
I'll let you know before, at the next council meeting, if it's going to be, they have to be received by that date. For instance, for this proceeding, they had to be received by the end of the public hearing. So it's probably receipt by January seventeenth, but I'll confirm that.
And when would the ballot be mailed?
November twenty-seventh is what we're shooting for.
November twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Shall we press on?
Um, I was going to say, can we take a five-minute break?
Okay.
Right now, and then before general business?
Okay, so we'll take a break, and we'll resume at seven thirty.
Thank you.[1187.25]
We are live, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're back.
I'm just not that boss.
Are we under, are we being recorded? So Mayor, before you proceed with 22, I have to recuse myself and I will leave the room.
Thank you, City Attorney Barrow. So item number 22 is consideration of a resolution approving amendment to the existing legal services agreement with Richards, Watson, and Gershon to add prosecution services. And I believe we have Assistant to the City Manager, George Gabriel.
Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Franklin and Members of the City Council, George Gabriel, Assistant to the City Manager. Council, you will recall this item comes before you following direction at the September 5th, 2023 meeting where City Council considered a variety of prosecutorial services proposals and directed staff to engage with the city's existing primary legal counsel, Richard Watson and Gershon, also known as RWG, to add more robust prosecution services and explore amending the city's public nuisance regulations, the latter of which will return to the City Council before the end of the calendar year. So in accordance with the, with council direction, the city and RWG have drafted a contract to add prosecution services, which basically allows, which basically amends the city's, the city and RWG's scope of services to add prosecution services to that scope. So some crimes that may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor include trespassing, graffiti, illegal shopping carts, public urination, public nuisance, and smoking in public. It should be noted that in prior reports to the council, reinforcing prosecution services will not provide authority to the city prosecutor to prosecute state law misdemeanors. Some of those state law misdemeanors include public intoxication, disturbing the peace, drug and paraphernalia possession, and more. Prosecuting these state misdemeanors requires the consent of Los Angeles District Attorney, which the city does not have at this moment. However, the city is working towards addressing that with our state legislative representative consistent with council direction. It should be noted the cost of this proposed prosecutorial service contract is $234 an hour on an as needed basis. The, because it's on an as needed basis, the fiscal implications are not immediately known at this time, but City Council will be presented, mid-year report will, where staff will let know where legal services costs are trending and if a budget appropriation is needed. Staff will return and ask for a budget, an appropriate budget appropriation for City Council consideration and approval. So with that being said, staff recommends the City Council adopt Resolution 23-0150 approving Amendment Number 5 to the certain agreement adding prosecution services to the current scope of services with Richards, Watson, and Gershon. Thank you, that includes my report.
Thank you, Council, any questions? David Lester?
I have a question, and I guess I'd direct it to you, George, is I'm a little bit unclear about the process for making a decision on pursuing certain types of prosecutions versus our administrative citation program where we attach fines for certain behavior, which has been an effective way to deter it. So there's a list here of various types of criminal behavior where the city has discretion to pursue the individuals that are alleged perpetrators. How are the decisions going to be made? Is this going to be up to the police chief and his and her staff? What can you talk about the process of this, the discretion to decide which type of crime is going to be prosecuted and how it's going to be prosecuted?
Great question, Councilmember Lester. So yes, you're correct, the police chief will have the discretion. Obviously, they will do so in consultation with the city manager and the city attorney on certain cases. As we have typically done in the past, we've utilized the administrative citation process where possible. With that being said, the state statute does allow us to prosecute up to a state misdemeanor on those certain and specific crime mentioned in the staff report. However, we'll be utilizing in all likelihood the administrative citation process, but we'll have the discretion to go forward with a misdemeanor if necessary, if required.
Is there a metric that staff is thinking of? And I recognize staff is responding to this council direction, but how do we determine whether this is a success? By engaging Richard Watson and Gershon to add these prosecutorial services? How are we measuring whether we're getting some more heft, whether we're getting more effective prosecutions of certain behaviors that we're trying to stop where we're frustrated with what the district attorney's office is doing or not doing?
That'll certainly be analyzed. I mean, it's, it's to be determined. It's, it's of our opinion currently that we'll benefit from this because we'll have that added flexibility to prosecute up to a state misdemeanor where needed. That being said, one thing the staff always does with all our legal services, we analyze the billing and we scrutinize it. And obviously, we'll be able to look at how much prosecution is actually occurring and we'll be working with the police department in order to understand number of cases, types of cases that are filed, and so on and so forth. So I hope that answers your question.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you. George, we always have had prosecution services of one kind or another, right?
Yes.
And, but for the last several years, they kind of morphed more into diversion projects. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we did a sharing project with Beach Cities Health District for diversion. It was mainly focused on youth, correct?
Correct, under the Juvenile Diversion Program.
So this would bring us back to having an actual prosecutor who we may never need, but if we do, they're there to enforce some of these things and whether it be infractions, misdemeanors that we're allowed to do, and also administrative citations, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we haven't, we're, we're going to fill a hole that we have currently.
Yes, I mean, we're, we're going to be adding more robust services as directed by the City Council. It's been something that the city hasn't necessarily focused on pre, or in the more recent years, but now we'll be opening up that scope to add some of those crimes that we referenced earlier. Previously, it was only juvenile diversion primarily.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Holworth?
And I, when I look at these, the crimes that can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor or infraction, and if I compare that to fines, I guess a question I would have, are, so I, I guess we're, we're hoping that this will be more of a deterrent than the fines. I mean, that would be, I guess, is that, that's, that's why we would go this way. Do any of our fines increase, like depending on if, you know, like public urination, public nuisance? Do those fines increase if you're, you know, arrested twice for that, three times?
I, I'm unsure about that, about those two crimes you mentioned, but I think one good example that we can reference is we recently passed some e-bike regulations and there was a structure as to when those fees increased dependent on the number of offenses that were taken.
Right.
So I would assume that we would have a similar way to do that with other crimes as well.
Well, I, I think we should, you know, separate and apart from this, possibly look at that. And I, because I, you know, what we're trying to do is to cut down on some of those, I'm going to call them all like public nuisance type issues, right? Unfortunately, this isn't going to cover the things, the state or the federal crimes, the, the shoplifting, the, you know, the theft, that stuff, you know? And that's, I think, some of the stuff that really, you know, people notice a lot. I mean, but, but public nuisance and drinking in public and public urination, I think those are probably really, and trespassing. People feel those crimes, you know? I'm a little worried about the dog crimes and I have to remind my husband because I don't want him to be prosecuted. Anyway, so I guess what I'm asking is maybe after we talk about this and decide what to do with this, we also look at our fine structures. Because to some of those, like especially the dog things, you know, if you catch somebody once without the dog on the leash, it's this much, and then the next time it's more. So, thank you.
Got it. Any more questions? Okay, public comments? Public comments here in the chamber? How about online?
There are no raised hands via Zoom.
Council discussion?
Push my button.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you. Just to say again, I think this is filling a need that we may or may not have, but we have also always had prosecution services and we should always have prosecution services to have in our back pocket. Escalating fines are great, but they don't always dissuade some folks. They need more than that. And a prosecutor is the backbone to those fines. If we ever have a diversion program, which we could establish our own diversion program regarding homelessness, regarding mentally ill, regarding addicted folks, we could have our own diversion program because we have the backup of prosecution. The reason why the homeless court works in Redondo Beach is because a judge says, "Do this or else." Right now, we don't have an "or else," but we can work with these folks and keep referring. Now, it's not a cure-all to everything that is going on out there, but there's enough here, I believe, that if there is a need for prosecution or diversion, having that, those prosecution services provides a backstop to these things and just, again, as was said, a more robust service to achieve the things that we want to achieve.
Councilmember Holworth?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I am in favor of this. I do think it fills a gap. I asked about the graduated fines as an additional thing, just, I, I like having a lot of tools and then our, you know, police chief and staff will make, you know, good determinations. You know, you mentioned a diversion and the homeless court in Redondo Beach, that's an excellent point, but I also, I, we no longer have our own juvenile diversion and we sort of partner with Beach Cities Health District, but it hasn't been the same. And I want, you know, at some point, I think we need to discuss that again because, especially with what's been going on in our community with some, some juveniles, I think that's a really, that has been a very, I think a well-valued program, and I think our police department would say so as well, although I'm, I'm not trying to speak for y'all, but I've, I've heard good things. So I, I do support this. But I'd like us to consider more juvenile diversion as well in the future. Perhaps canine diversion too, but you know where my biases lie. So I'll, I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
I agree with my colleagues. I'm in favor of moving forward with this supplemental agreement with Richard Watson and Gershon. This has been a long road for our community as it looked in prior council at different arrangements for prosecutorial services. Obviously, there were frustrations with the district attorney not prosecuting certain cases. There was an exploration of moving our prosecutorial services to the city of Redondo Beach with the hope that we would be able to prosecute certain cases, that we're not able. This is the best workaround that I think we could come up with, and moreover, echoing what Councilmember Napolitano indicated, it restores our capacity to prosecute crimes beyond just pursuing the administrative citation process, which was to be adopted in 2016. I'm in support of it.
Great, so I'll wrap it up. I see it also as being a good effective tool to, to cut down on nuisance crimes, but really it's, it's more than, but more than a nuisance. I was just looking through the list and just thinking, well, trespassing, well, that sounds, could be a little bit benign, but you'd be upset, you know, if somebody came into, you know, into your yard or came into your, you know, came in, into your home or came onto your property that you didn't want and they weren't listening, and you're able now to call the police and have that person, you know, processed for trespassing. Same thing with graffiti. I mean, that's a crime against all of us. Fortunately, we got a great public works department that if you use Reach the Beach, and here again, another commercial for the Reach the Beach app, you'll get that graffiti cleaned up rather quickly. And that's another comment that our residents say is that we really do take care of that. But to be able to prosecute the person, you know, who's doing that, and more than just a slap on the wrist or chasing them away, we can actually have an effective tool. And, and, and so on with the rest of the items here. So it's, it's more than a nuisance and, and I think it can help give a feeling of safety and comfort, you know, to our residents and visitors here. So I wholeheartedly support this. So if there's no more, more comments, call, call for a motion. We got Amy Holworth has moved.
I.
Councilmember Holworth?
Yeah, I moved to approve an amendment to the existing legal services agreement with Richards, Watson, and Gershon to add prosecution services. And that means adopt Resolution Number 23-0150.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Holworth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Montgomery's absent. Motion passes 401.
Somebody need to go get Quinn or, oh, no, yeah, he, yeah, he can come back now, right? Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number 23, consideration of holiday event enhancements. Parks and Recreation Director Lehman?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of the City Council. Mark Lehman, you're Parks and Recreation Director. Start us off here. So the event enhancement item before you this evening at the City Council meeting on July 5th, council directed the Parks and Recreation Commission to develop a list of possible holiday event enhancements. They also directed them to develop a checklist to ensure continuity year to year with each of these event deliverables. They also directed staff to revisit the seasonal displays of American flags that were cut during the pandemic. And the ad hoc committee met on the, with the commission, developed all of these enhancements that I'm presenting tonight, and the commission also unanimously approved these recommendations to the City Council. So I plan to run through each event to provide the current deliverables, the recommended enhancements, and then seek direction for each specific enhancements at the conclusion of the presentation, if that works for City Council. Great, so diving right in, beginning with Memorial Day. Currently there are, the city does not actively highlight this holiday. However, again, as directed, it's However, again, as directed, the commission recommended restoring the flag installation throughout the city. These are three by five American flags, 71 various locations throughout the city, and the timeframe would be from Memorial Day through the end of July. I'll run through this at the end, but there's a cost estimate of $18,000, again, that this was cut previously from, or during the pandemic. Other possible enhancements that the committee discussed, as we learned from Counselor member Napolitano during the Fallen Heroes discussion, the design of the Veterans Monument honors both living and those who passed during their service. So another recommendation was to add a flower wreath at the monument on Memorial Day. And again, I'll share those cost estimates at the end of the presentation. And then last, just as an update regarding the Fallen Heroes Monument, the Parks and Recreation Commission, based on City Council direction, established an ad hoc committee, we're actually meeting tomorrow to begin discussions, and this will be brought back to City Council at their January 16 meeting. So moving forward to Independence Day, July 4th, we continue our big pool July 4th party for many, many years, patriotic music, red, white, and blue flags, games, and of course, lots of community pool time. In terms of enhancements, again, restoring the American flags, similar to the proposed enhancement of Memorial Day, that would be the 71 locations throughout the city with the three by five flags.
Question, Your Honor? Just, sorry, but.
Yes.
Jump in here, but, so I've got installation of 71 American flag locations, including hardware is $18,000. And then 30 of those, so less than half is $10,000 at Poliwok. And are we talking about the, which I don't understand that math, but these flags, right, when we say we're going to leave them up from Memorial Day to the end of July, that's going to be a lot of wear and tear on those flags. Are we going to have to replace those on a yearly basis, we think, or every two years probably, at the, at the least?
Two years would be a good estimate, without length, correct?
Because we don't want to put out a bunch of faded, frayed flags.
Correct, and we would be storing those in-house at the end of each season.
So do we know what the cost of the flags are is versus the cost of the hardware? I just ask because, I don't know, because there's the labor cost of taking, putting them in, taking them down. You know, do we want to keep them in Memorial Day through the end of July, or Memorial Day and then right before and right after July 4th? I, the labor cost or the time, I don't know if it's done in-house. I guess a breakdown of those costs would be nice.
Yeah.
At some point.
Absolutely, happy to do that. And we received, we didn't receive that specific information. There was, with the vendor, there were some health issues, and so there was a challenge to get the information that we brought to City Council, but we can absolutely bring that detailed information back. And if you'd like, again, this is something that the commission, or, excuse me, the council may direct to the commission. They can further vet this, provide a detailed map of what those dates and times and locations would be, and then we can bring that back for your consideration.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Good.
Great.
Yeah, because I had comments about it, but I'll wait till the end.
Great. Okay, and then just other ideas that the committee brainstormed for, for July 4th were community-based parade in the downtown area, whether it's closed or open, again, early before the crowds come in. And this could be, again, decorating your bike, your scooter, your golf cart, red, white, and blue. Encourage the community to get out, and then encourage block parties throughout, throughout the city. So moving on to Veterans Day, as you know, the Parks and Recreation Department, in collaboration with Management Services, organizes this event every year of wide variety. We have a wonderful keynote speaker. As I, as I announced earlier, a wide variety of deliverables. In the past, one add-on that we did look into, we used to have a reception and a band and food at the Jostle Center after, but we haven't done that for a number of years. It really wasn't that well-attended, and I think just the core event itself has been the most successful. So a few possible enhancements that the commission looked at for this was, one, potentially looking into a street closure, again, minimizing the traffic and noise during the event. And then also, we received an idea from Mayor Pro Tem regarding a thank you veterans banner that could be placed downtown as well as another enhancement.
I'll have a question for later on this.
Great.
Okay.
For Labor Day, city does not formally celebrate this holiday, and there are no recommended enhancements for Labor Day. So moving on to 9/11 Memorial or Patriot Day, a ceremony is held by the police and fire departments. Memorial includes a statement from the chief, lowering of the flags, placement of a wreath, flowers, and a moment of silence. Historically, a larger, more widely advertised ceremony has taken place on each fifth anniversary. That trend will continue. The next milestone event will be in 2026, and we do anticipate broader promotion for that event. Moving on to Flag Day, no recommended enhancements. Again, however, you know, based on the recommendations of when the American flags are placed, this may be during Flag Day as well, and it may cover it. Moving on to Salute to the Troops, so this event was established in 2015. Parks and Recreation Initiative and City Council approved this event, recognizing both active military and veterans. It started off very grassroots. It was with the commissioners and staff. We were grilling hot dogs and hamburgers and handing out ice cream, and it has evolved. We've also had challenge coins. It was one of the commissioners that would purchase challenge coins every year. We've gotten away from those practices. Also, we had military bands in previous years. On the fifth anniversary, the Satin Dolls, which is a USO-style ensemble, performed and really has been a crowd favorite, so that band has continued each year since the fifth anniversary. We continue to have our Redondo High School Marine Corps juniors present the colors during the National Anthem every year, and then staff, commissioners, and scouts distribute small American flags throughout the event. And since 2015, we have recognized each individual branch of the service. And so looking at possible enhancements, one could be, again, continuing that special recognition for milestone events. Again, this year is the 70th anniversary of the end of the Korean War, so each year looking at what those milestone events could be. The flyover from the Torrance-based Tiger Squadron is also a request from the City Council, as well as the 30 American flags placed throughout Poliwok Park. And so wrapping up the last event, again, the pier, the current pier light schedule that has a variety of colors recognizing events throughout the year, with red, white, and blue, it's President's Day, July 4th, Veterans Day, and Labor Day, and then, of course, the pier lighting and holiday open house that I spoke about earlier this evening. And no additional enhancements for the holiday season. So that concludes my presentation. I can run through each of the recommendations for City Council direction and field any questions. So should I just start from the top and move down?
I think we wait for our questions, right? I mean, I don't, I want to, they might help your inform, or do, I don't care. Do whatever you want to. If you want to start, if you want to start, we can all follow, because I like, I have a few questions on a few different ones, but.
What are we doing right now?
He said he was going to go down each one, and then we would talk about it. I think he should let us ask our questions.
We might want to take public input first.
Yeah, but we usually ask questions and take public input.
Yeah, if you have questions.
Yeah, I have questions.
Let's hear the questions.
Okay, we good? We're good.
You seem to go back and forth. That's why I hesitate.
No, I, that's fine. I do have questions, so I, that's why I was, don't go down through each one, let us ask. So, 4th of July, one of the ideas was maybe a downtown parade. I mean, have we talked to the Downtown Business Association or anybody about that, or, no, that's.
We wanted to seek direction. It also could be on the East Side. I know there were a number of ideas that were thrown out.
I had a question. Salute to the troops, which is, you know, a wonderful event, but I've always wondered, like, why doesn't it come closer to, say, Veterans Day or Memorial Day? Like, why isn't it, is it part of Memorial Day weekend?
It kicks off the concert series near July 4th, precedes July 4th.
It precedes July 4th, so, okay. So, all right, because I was thinking, maybe it should be tied into one of those.
No concerts in November in the park.
No, no concerts in November, I get it, but in Memorial Day, I mean, you could do, do it around there. But that's okay. I understand it kicks off. That was, that's the question, I'm good with it. So 9/11, which I think, I, our 9/11 memorial is so meaningful to me, but it is a federally recognized national day of service, and I'm wondering if there'd be any interest in, you know, every year picking a citywide service project that people could participate in. And that could be something we could discuss later, but that's an idea, right? And then, my last question, oh, the holiday season, I know we started some years ago doing a menorah at Metlocks, and is that something we could add to this? That's not on here for the holiday season, and I think I would like to see that on there. I mean, it's, we don't really, we, there's some staff time because we help secure it, and we provide electricity, but usually the JCC brings it over and does a thing for it, so.
But are you asking that we take it over?
No, I'm, but, I'm asking it be codified, that it's part of this. I see what you're saying, this, these are parks, we could take it over, I mean, we do other holiday things. Christmas trees on the.
If you want to ruin an event, have the city take it over.
Well, Christmas, no, no, listen, Christmas trees on the pier is not us, that's.
Insurance.
That's done, that's done by the Downtown Business, no, that's us? The Christmas trees are us? Okay, I'm looking at Jill.
The lights on the pier.
Yeah, that light, okay, the lights, Christmas tree, but not the Christmas trees that line the pier. Those are, that's the Downtown Business Association. So that's sort of a misnomer here. I don't know, I would like to see it codified, that's all. That, I understand what you're saying, Steve, I'm not saying we take it over, but, just a thought. Oh, the, I had a, well, it's an opinion, I'll say it later. Thank you.
Counselor member Lesser, any questions?
Mark, I have a question about Memorial Day celebrations. It's not just an issue in our community, it is nationwide, that it doesn't seem that there's a proper sort of honoring of those that have fallen in the line of service at sexual ceremony. But I'm wondering to what extent either your staff or the Parks and Rec Commission have looked at what other cities do for Memorial Day. We have a big event for Veterans Day that's coming up Saturday, but I'm just wondering about Memorial Day, because that's not listed as a potential supplemental enhancement.
So regarding options, we can absolutely look into what other agencies are doing for Memorial Day, and we can include that in the research that they are doing for the Fallen Heroes Monument.
Okay. And I certainly would agree with Counselor member Napolitano with regards to just posting flags and leaving them there for a number of weeks. I would be interested in what the cost would be to put them up, and then to take them down after the holiday weekend, and then perhaps use them again, whatever number we arrive at and locations we arrive at. That's more of a comment than a question. In terms of questions, with regard to a July 4th parade, my in-laws live in a community that has a parade on July 4th, and it's really fun. Obviously, it involves staff time on a holiday. We'd want to be sure that there'd be enough people that were interested in doing this, whether it's golf carts or bicycles. But I guess I'm wondering, how would you identify, how my staff or the commission identify whether there's really interest in this? For most of us, we have usually plans on July 4th, we want to make sure that if we host an event, that people would participate.
So they can definitely, again, look into and research the other agencies that may be doing this. I believe the downtown does it currently early morning. I think I've seen some videos of some of the golf carts and bikes and, and so it's something that, again, the Parks and Recreation Commission ad hoc committee can explore.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So just a couple of questions as well. On Memorial Day, does, doesn't Torrance do a big event?
They have an Armed Forces Day parade that is not on, is it on, I don't think, is it on Memorial Day?
I think it's Memorial Day.
I thought it was May 6th.
Yes.
I'll check.
Yeah, check that interweb thingy. Because, you know, I'm kind of sensitive to competing, you know, with something that's well-established and, and the like, and, you know, if that's a big draw, then it's going to be tough to.
May 19.
Make something that's going to be a big draw as well. And also too, you know, that's the first, you know, major holiday for tourism and things like that.
Yeah, it's May 20th.
It's May.
May 19th and 20, to, May 19th through the 21st, but I think the parade is actually on the 20th.
Yep.
Okay, so is that considered Memorial? Memorial Day is.
No.
Changes, right? Because it's the last weekend.
It's always the last, that's not the last weekend.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so even the things that are proposed look to be okay. I mean, you know, there's a dearth of American flags, you know, out in public, so that would be great to have those up. The wreath by the Veterans Memorial, you know, with a small ceremony or even large ceremony, and the Fallen Heroes Monument, that's being worked on, right?
Correct.
Great. So Independence Day, so let's talk about the Satin Dolls, because it's a great show.
Were you talking about the salute to the troops, or?
Which is different.
Well, salute to the troops, though, is always tied into the concerts in the park around July 4th.
Right, but that's where the Satin Dolls perform. I just didn't know why you were.
Yeah, what?
Well, so you said it's the Sunday prior to July 4th, but.
Usually precedes July 4th.
It precedes.
And it kicks, and kicking off our concert series.
Okay, so, so next year, for example, that would be then June 30th? That would be the, is that the first Sunday that the.
Correct.
Concerts in the park? Okay. Okay, great.
Don't want to miss the Satin Dolls. Put it on your calendar now.
I know, yeah. Don't get confused, because it is a great show. The parade and golf carts, so that's actually, would be actually on July 4th, no matter when it comes, right?
That is the proposal, yes.
Yeah, okay. And the golf carts have been kind of a private group, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it was just one idea, and again, early morning, whether or not streets are closed, or, you know, they talked about downtown or East Side.
Right.
Really just bringing the community together.
Okay, great. And the big, the big pool party is always, is always fun. Okay, great. Veterans Day, looking forward to the one this year. Let me see. The 911 memorial event, I didn't even realize that it was like, there was like a five-year, you know, official recognition, but it's just been organic. I mean, it's been, there's been some really touching events in the meanwhile, you know, in between the five years.
I'm confused, though. Are we asking questions, or we're going through these one by one, because I'd like to go through them too?
Well, I'm just asking questions about this, so, so that is definitely the plan? There has been a five-year cycle?
Correct.
Where the city sponsors, okay, just wanted to verify that. Salute to the troops in the holiday season. That's all I have. Yeah. Did you have additional questions?
I don't have questions, I just have comments.
Yeah, okay. So let's take public comments.
Me again, Stefan. On the Veterans Day, I think it'd be really great, we have Vet Fest coming up this weekend. Instead of competing with them, if we could partner with them, the Rotary Club that's posting that. So if you could have some of your members attend that, I think we could learn if we can actually do something together with the community.
Anybody else here? About online?
There are no raised hands via Zoom.
Okay. So comments? Discussion?
Yeah, I had.
Do we want the, I thought Director Lehman was going to go through them one by one, then we can all comment on them, or no? How do you want to run it?
Ted? That makes sense, yeah. Why don't we go through each one?
Great.
So beginning with Memorial Day?
And I do have a comment about that. So my comment, and I think there's been a couple of questions raised about if you put up the flags of Memorial Day, leave them up through July 4th, there's, that's a lot of wear and tear, and.
Actually, the end of July. That's what, the proposal's the end of July.
Yeah, and I, I, this may be more expensive from a labor perspective, I just think. Yeah, and I, I, this may be more expensive from a labor perspective, I just think it's so special to see the flags, and then you realize it's Memorial Day, but if you leave them up, and they're sort of there, and they're sort of there, it's like, wait, is it something this week? Is it something this week? And then they're still there for July 4th. I think, I would really be more in favor of seeing them at Memorial Day, and then come down, and then at July 4th. So, I know that's probably, it could be more expensive, I think it's more impactful, and it's what we're supposed to be doing, we're not just supposed to leave them up. I mean, I love the flag, but it doesn't make, it doesn't seem, doesn't tie into the holiday that as much for me, so, that's my comment there.
Okay. Councilmember Napolitan?
Thank you, I agree. I think they should go up and come down, and then back up again for the 4th of July, and then also for Veterans Day.
Yes, Veterans, yes.
I think Veterans Day should be added to the flags.
Agreed.
I also, you know, though, the wreath, I think is, is appropriate. I hesitate to say we'll do more, because it's not clear what that more would be, you know, it's not a celebration Memorial Day, it's commemoration, it's a recognition. We haven't had, I'm not, you know, aware of the service folks, or parents, or siblings of service folks that have been lost, and that would be something that would need to come together, before I would want to have any kind of event there without them. Fallen Heroes Monument, you know, I still, I don't know where that's going to fall into this, I don't know, you know, what the limitations are, what the proposals are for that, we're still going to be reviewing that. I think that for this year, I'd like to stick to the flags and the wreath.
Yep.
For this year.
Okay. Councilmember Lesser?
Great, I agree with what Councilmember Napolitan, and Councilmember Corrigan just indicated. I was just going to ask about the number of flags, I wasn't quite sure where the number of flags is, 71 flags, the flag locations, or, I mean, I, we're not looking at a map, we don't need to micromanage this, I defer to staff, but I certainly agree with the flags going up for the holiday and coming down afterwards, and then going back up again on July 4th, for that weekend, and then coming back out, coming down afterwards.
And if I could, for clarification, how far in advance, and how, how long would you like to keep them up after? Like, two weeks total, seven days?
Two weeks is too long.
What would be preferable?
I think-
Four or five days.
Yeah, no more than six days.
And, so, two days prior, or the day prior?
Two days prior, day of, and two days after.
Yep.
It's got symmetry to it.
Just so, it gives you time to take them down.
Yeah, and it just feels special, it's commemorated. Also, you, the pier light schedule, I'm sorry, in your PowerPoint, I don't think it's spelled out, but you are saying for Memorial Day, 4th of July, Veterans Day will be red, white, and blue, and 9/11? Is that-
That's in our previous approval of that.
That's, okay, sorry, just wanted to confirm. Great.
Yeah. Okay, and-
I think, just the question of what other cities do for Memorial Day, I mean, obviously it's a holiday, and many people are celebrating the holiday, as opposed to something that's more focused, like our Veterans Day ceremony, but I'm just curious, is there anything more that we might want to consider? Or is it too ambitious? I certainly agree with starting with what has just been described, but longer term, I'm curious if other cities do something for Memorial Day.
You know-
To that point, if I may as well, I mean, I would love to see something organic, I'll throw it out there, because I don't want to start burning staff with every holiday or recognition, having to do that, as opposed to those who this is very meaningful for, and should be meaningful for all of us. But staff, you know, working on holidays and everything else like that, I think we need to be mindful of that. I would love to, you know, I can guess what other cities do, I think we start small and build, since we haven't done anything, I'd rather start, start small, build from there, if there's a veterans group in town that wants to do recognition, we can bring, I mean, that's how our Veterans Day came about.
And-
Fair point, also have a salute to the troops, starting with the commissioners of the Park and Rec Commission and other supporters. I, I agree with you, thank you.
I mean, you could also go, I mean, if you go to the national cemeteries, you know, the federal cemetery, you do wreath lane, you know, there's, but that's different, so we're proposing a wreath, so I like that. Okay.
And, and I'll finish up Memorial Day by saying I agree with everything that I've heard from my colleagues.
Flags up and down.
Okay, so, Independence Day?
Sure, I'll jump in.
Councilmember Napolitan?
Thank you, flags, yes, same idea, two days before, day of, two days after, no change to July 4th, of course, the big pool party, I mean. As far as, again, parade, I think that we're having these parades with the golf carts and stuff now, I wouldn't get the city involved in that. We'll ask them for insurance-
Liability.
Then we'll have to have staff block off streets, and then we're going to have to do this, that, and the other, and that's, again, how to ruin some very organic things. The people who do it enjoy it, they love it, and the community loves seeing it, but to make it some city-sponsored thing, I think will just bring more layers of unnecessary bureaucracy to those. Encourage block parties throughout the city, I'd say let's bring back something that waives the cost of block parties on July 4th.
Love that idea. Yeah, I agree with you also, the parade, you know, think how crowded July 4th is at the beach, and it's early, and, like, we will, we will take a ride down to the street, ride on our bikes, and it's crazy early, and I just see, don't-
Jeff deserves July 4th off, too.
They, well, I didn't say that, but no, they do, they do, and, I mean, there's, there's a parade happening, let that be organic, too. I do like the idea about waiving the block party fee, that's a great idea, definitely with the flags, so, agree.
Councilmember Lesser?
I agree with what I've heard, I think maybe a way to frame up the waiving of fees would be to request staff to come back, what are the cost implications, what are the staffing implications, but I can be receptive to that, I just want to get a little more information on what it means.
Okay, and I-
I think the block party permit fee is 150 now, or something?
Well, it's-
190?
Thank you.
So, we're not going to have an overwhelming loss of, people have block parties anyway, they just don't get permits.
I was just going to say, oh, no, I need to apply now.
But there's a-
They need somewhere to fire off their fireworks. Just kidding.
There's also insurance, you know, that's required, too, on that, so, that adds some expense, but so that's, so waiving the fee would be helpful. I agree that the golf carts and the like are organic, I remember Pacific Elementary School used to have a bike parade, and things like that, if they all want to sort of get together, let's go ahead and let them get together, and, and it's a lot of fun, I participated in the July 4th golf cart parade for a couple of years now, so it's a lot of fun. Okay, moving on to Veterans Day?
Thank you.
I mean, yes, add the flags, keep what we have, I don't understand the street closure bit, because we sort of do that as it is, but, I mean, I, I think our Veterans Day's service is actually impactful as well. I love that the scouts get involved, it's always a really good part of it, so, but add the flags.
Yeah, unless the traffic is, is, I mean, it's certainly grown, right, we have more people, unless the people are spilling out into the streets, or there's some issue there, I wouldn't block off the traffic, just because, you know, it, it just creates problems elsewhere.
Yep.
And then it creates the need for staff to be there, block off the streets, and the police and everything to do that. I think that so far, it's still working well, and we can judge it year by year if we need to do anything else.
But add the flags, you're good with adding the flags, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, Councilmember Lesser?
Great, we will, it's a-
So, I agree, too, it's a great organic event, the scout's involvement is just terrific, the scout troops are growing, I mean, they're, they're doing a great job, so this is a great opportunity to, to show off their talents and their, and their, they can earn merit badges and things like that, so, absolutely. Boy Scouts, I think we're a scout.
I think we should have everyone work on Labor Day.
I know. Let's have a Labor Day parade.
Let's have a Labor Day.
For the Veterans Day banner placed downtown, where council's thoughts on-
I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so, Labor Day?
Yeah, I'll go, oh, we're skipping Labor Day.
Yeah, we don't do anything.
We're not doing it.
Yeah.
There's no recommendation, but the 9/11 Patriots' Day, you know, this has been awkward, admittedly, the last few years, because we were told we're not going to do anything every five years, but then we're having the formal, informal gathering with police and fire. I think we should just make a recognition every year, and then we just do more every five years. But I, I think we should stop the idea that we're only doing something every fifth year as a city, while the departments are doing something on there. Just let's have council there, invite the community, and let's just do it.
Every year.
Every year.
I, I really agree, because it's very, you're right, it's awkward, it's almost like, wait, I didn't know, it looks like you're doing something, people will say to me, it's like, no, it's not really, right, and, and there are people in the community, I think this draws people, this is an emotional touchstone or date for people, for, you know, no matter what your political persuasion is, or if you have a family member who's served in the service, I mean, this day just gets you, and I think people want to be there.
It doesn't have to be longer drawn out.
No.
It's incredibly meaningful.
But announce that we're doing it, come join us, be together as a community, and, and add flags, or no?
Nah.
You don't need flags. I mean-
It'd be nice.
How, how about-
Let's, let's wait for the cost.
Let's wait for the cost.
15th and Valley, I mean, just in that surrounding area.
Or just pier lights, you could do pier lights, then, and, but, what about the idea of the, of deciding, hey, there's going to be a citywide service project for those who want to do something?
I think that's a great thing for future agenda.
Okay. I'm fine with that, I just, I thought it was a brilliant idea, but I'm willing to wait.
Councilmember Lesser? On 9/11?
With everything that's been said, I, I too feel that we should put on an event every year for the 9/11 Memorial Patriots' Day event.
Okay, great.
And I just want to go on, it's good as it is, I don't want three more hours of speeches, the, the chief's speaking is great as it is, if the mayor wants to give comments, great, it doesn't have to be more than what it is now, let's just tell people, yes, this is it, and this is what we're doing.
Agreed. Less confusing.
Agreed.
Good idea.
Yeah, it was a good turnout, even without this last 9/11. So-
Flag Day.
Flag Day. So, if you don't mind, I'll go first, I, I know that we, at City Hall, we put up three American flags on Flag Day, June 14th, and I think, oh, you got it, okay. So, so that looks nice, that looks, that looks pretty cool at, at City Hall. So, of course, flags, you know, that will be one of the days for the Flag Days, and I think that's fine.
What do you mean, the flags? You mean the flags out here at City Hall?
Well, the flags at City Hall, you know, they put them up on the mass, but in terms of the citywide flags-
Oh, you want to do citywide?
Yeah, citywide flags as well.
It says, if, if American flag installations are approved, they will be displayed during Flag Day.
Right, that was if we were going to do Memorial Day through the end of July, because it would cover, naturally cover June 14th.
Oh, look at that, look at that, yeah, you're right.
Why don't we see how much it costs to put them up?
I, I don't think we should put them up-
It's a lot of up and down.
-for Flag Day, like, it's a lot of up and down, I do think, what we could do is, we could do a simple, I, I like the flags at City Hall, you know?
I think we should stick with the biggies, yeah.
Yeah.
Flags at City Hall on Flag Day, but, I mean, I don't know who celebrates Flag Day anymore, not that they shouldn't, before I get the emails, they should. But, really, there's, there's few, who, I, I mean, I don't even know if it's a thing in schools anymore, I don't know if Arbor Day is a thing in schools anymore.
Right.
But, you know, in terms of the biggies, Memorial Day, July 4th, right, we've, we've kind of covered the other things that we said we do, I, something more in line with what we did with the pier lighting, the same dates, I think we can consider here, but we don't do Flag Day, I think, even for the-
Right.
-pier lights.
Here we do.
No.
No?
President's Day, July 4th, Veterans Day, and Labor Day, for red, white, and blue.
Should we do 9/11, red, white, and blue?
Sure.
We should do 9/11, red, white, and blue.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Okay, and then-
I still think-
Salute to the troops?
Huh?
I still think St. Patrick's Day should be green, but I know it's not a city holiday.
I think it should, too, why not?
Well, nobody wants to change the lights, though. Anyway, we can come back to-
Can I say something about salute to the troops? I think it's weird that it's here, I know it's, it feels like these other things are either national holidays or something, and then it's like, oh, and salute to the troops.
Wait, I think it's good as is, I, I don't know what the cost of the Tiger Squadron is.
Surprisingly, I think relatively inexpensive, I believe it was under $2,000, that includes the insurance.
Okay, because I'm worried about cost for basically 10 seconds of-
True.
How many last 10 seconds?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I don't want to get rid of it, I'm not saying I don't want, I, I just, I was questioning-
Talking about the Tiger Squadron.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I was-
This would be an addition, not getting rid of it.
Yeah, 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 I, I wanted to clarify that, when I said, why is salute to the troops in here, when everything else is Veterans Day, Memorial Day, 9/11, salute to the troops, but, it's fine.
Well, it's just that it's associated with, there's some provenance with July 4th.
No, there's provenance, I get it, it's just a logic, it's a word logical thing.
I'm for the 30 American flags and leave it as is.
I am, too.
Okay.
I don't think we need to-
I, I, no, there's a whole history to the evolution of the salute to the troops event, it's really a terrific event, people like it as it is, why change it?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I've lost my connection at Miramar for flyover, so, we're in core, so. All right, that's good.
Holiday season.
Holiday season, anything? I mean, that's pretty-
Listen.
Well-oiled.
I'm going to talk about the menorah again, because we talk about on here, the celebration of the holiday season kicks off with the pier lighting and Holiday Open House in downtown. The Holiday Open House is a downtown Manhattan Beach event, it's not, like, we close off streets and stuff, but they sponsor it. I think we put the menorah on here because we provide space at Metlocks.
There's a couple of things, though, one is that's directly pertaining to a religious symbol, as opposed to holiday, not Christmas, holiday, pier lighting, and Holiday Open House.
No, I get, I get that.
And we, there is the menorah lighting, but it's done by private parties-
Okay.
-that we say, yes, we're going to-
That's true.
And that's why, I, if it's good as it is, why do we need to take it over?
It's not, it, that's, no, I, I hear what you're saying now, too, I, I don't need us to take it over, I wanted it, I'm sensitive, so I wanted to codify it, I, because I want us to know, here's why, here's why, because I want us to know, every year, during the holiday season, there's also a menorah that we, that we plan for.
I think that's great, and I think we do now, and I think as long as the temples bring it forward, we're going to do it. We, we've already said that before.
We're actually in the process of permitting it for this year, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but it's not, it's not, it's not a, it's not, these are like, we also, the Christmas trees, it's listed Christmas trees on pier.
Well, I don't know why that's put there, but it's not a city thing, it's a private donation.
Right, so, it's private, so why couldn't we put menorah on here? Menorah lighting, I'm just saying- I'm just saying it...
Pier lighting is going to take place where the trees are there or not. They always has.
I know.
Trees have only been there for a few years.
I know, so...
I just don't see the comparison...
I know, we're totally, by the way, we're totally, it's a semantic and a logic thing right now. It's not, it's not disagreement about whether we should have a menorah or not. I totally get that.
We're going to have it.
I want it clear.
Yeah. Why they're called Christmas trees, I have no idea. We don't call them Christmas trees.
I love Christmas, and I love Christmas trees. Let's, let me just say that for the record. I don't see why we, if we, if we, what we're talking is about legacy events. We're talking about, so our staff knows, so this is what's expected. We're expected to put up flags and take them down. We're expect, we're expected to close off streets.
My question on that, though, is that if somebody else doesn't do it, right, then we're expecting staff to do it for them. That seems to be your point.
No.
Because, well, then, it's already being done, is my issue, though.
It's like the golf carts, right?
No.
You want to codify...
No, it's not the golf carts. That's my point.
No, in the sense that that's somebody, the residents, take care of it.
No, that's my point.
I'm not sure we can codify the placement of the menorah.
Then we can't codify Christmas trees on the pier.
Agreed. We're not, we haven't codified it. They ask us.
Then we should, it's, that's current. It's current.
I know that, but they ask us every year.
This is my point. We also can't codify holiday open house because if the downtown business doesn't do it, then we wouldn't do it. But that's on here.
I don't understand the word codify in the use here, though. We're not doing those things.
It's in our present...
But the pier lighting is in conjunction with the holiday open house.
I know.
It used to be separate.
The PowerPoint, look at your, look at the PowerPoint.
I've got it all in front of me.
The celebration of the holiday season kicks off with the pier lighting, great, and holiday open house downtown in November. So it's in there.
Going to see the religious...
There's no religious. It's, it's just, the season culminates with the holiday fireworks, which is great, partially sponsored by the city. Currently, we have the pier light schedule. We have Christmas trees on the pier, seasons greetings, happy holidays, and snowflakes lighting. So all I'm saying, and it really, I'm, it's on me because I'm not being, I'm not communicating so you can understand, is that we're saying, this whole thing is about, hey, everybody, this is sort of what happens so that we're all prepared for it, right? It's sort of like a checklist. So if we're all gone, it's like, okay, this is going to happen, this is going to happen. And if we're going to say Christmas trees on the pier, which we don't put on the pier, right, why wouldn't we say menorah lighting at Metlocks? We don't do that. But it, but if we're going to put Christmas trees on the pier and holiday open house, why wouldn't we add menorah lighting at Metlocks? Do you see that? Do you see that logic? It's like...
If you want to put it down there, I'm not going to oppose it. I just, you know, there's lots of things that happen over the holidays that aren't on here, and we don't do, the Chamber has their holiday mixer, which we just advertise up there.
But this involves permits, this involves, this involves staff, this involves that stuff. This should be part of what we are doing.
When we're asked to do it, we do it.
So far. I mean...
Well, nothing we say is going to force any future council to agree to it.
What's that, David?
I was just going to say, from the bleacher seats here remotely, I, interesting where you're coming from, I think, Councilmember Horwath, you would like to see this broader holiday spectrum included on the holiday season list, but I think we've given staff direction as to what should be included going forward to make our holiday celebrations more robust. Is that a good place to leave it? I want to make sure that I'm not omitting anything, because I think for you, you just would want to make sure that the menorah celebration is part of the holiday season.
That's all I would say. Put it on there so that we all know it's good, like, you guys, we have, well, I think we've all supported it. And please don't think I don't want Christmas trees on the pier. I love them. I'm just saying it makes sense that, therefore, it makes sense to put menorah lighting at Metlocks.
I guess the only difference I'm seeing, and I'm not trying to split hairs here, is that the holiday season, like even the Christmas trees on here, this, this is just a description of what it is. And you can include, actually, the menorah celebration should be included in that paragraph that says holiday season.
That's what I'm saying.
But what I'm talking about is the current or previous event deliverables. And my concern is adding menorah lighting to the deliverables because it's not for city staff to make that a...
Neither's Christmas trees on the pier.
So if you want to add menorah to that holiday season up above there...
Sure.
That's fine.
I'd love that.
It's a recognition of what does go on in town.
Yes. That's what I want. That's what I want.
Okay. I didn't hear that, so...
Let's do that.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
All right. If I can circle back to Labor Day.
Oh, good luck.
I know we didn't want to put any flags up, but I heard that there was a tie between the pier lights being lit and flags being put up, and so...
For Labor Day?
No.
Well, I just want to make sure that you don't want to put flags up on a national holiday where people are typically off, where we're suggesting on the Flag Day...
They can take Labor Day off.
Okay.
No pier lights.
But I'm saying Flag Day, nobody typically takes off or putting the flags up. I just want to clarify. Okay.
Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you for your, thank you. This is great that we have this now, though, isn't it?
Yes. Heard it.
We good?
Mayor Protem, I think you had asked about where we were with the Juneteenth planning.
Oh, yeah, the Juneteenth, yeah.
So Mark can give you a very brief update.
Thank you for that.
We're not completely through the process yet, but he'll tell you where we are.
The latest update, the committee just had the second Juneteenth community meeting. It was on Saturday, this past Saturday, November 4th, 11:00 a.m., right next door at the library here. So the Parks and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee will develop all of those options, put those together, and we plan to return to City Council on December 5th to present those options.
How does it turn out?
I think about 20 was the number that I heard.
A little less than the first time.
Yes.
I mean, less.
Yes. But again, just verifying what those recommendations are, and I think the group had some good suggestions.
I have a question about that, just in terms of developing options. Like, if somebody said, and I think we should have, I mean, like, do you develop, do you take all the options that that group of people, like, came up with and develop all those options? Or do you say, this one's not practical, or this, like, how do you decide which options to develop?
So I think just the realistic options that they think are palatable for the community. So I think in general, the group is looking at smaller, starting small, looking more grassroots, you know, what works, and, you know, again, this possible location at Bruce's Beach, potentially something on the east side, but, but a scaled back version, a lot of the ideas that came out, I think there was some acknowledgement that the community isn't ready for something that large yet.
I mean, end of the day, council will decide which options, right?
Right.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City manager, city attorney, all, all done? Oh, did we, no motion? All right. This is direction. Okay, great.
No motion. You've provided clear direction.
Okay, item number, let's move on to item number 24, which is consideration of insourcing, pressure washing, and other related services for maintenance of the downtown Manhattan Beach and North Manhattan Beach Improvement District. Public Works Director Lee.
Evening again. It's my pleasure to present this proposal to you tonight. You know, as a way of background, this really, you know, kind of carries on from where we left last meeting with the street sweeping contract award. But just to retread some of that, in 2018, the city did enter into a five-year agreement with Athens Services for both street sweeping and pressure washing services. In June of this year, Athens advised us that it no longer wanted to provide services after the agreement expired in August. And so in July and August, we released two RFPs in hopes of finding a willing private contractor to do this work. And then also, in August, the City Council amended its agreement with Athens to provide street sweeping services only for a period of 90 days, which ends at the end of November. So as it relates to our RFP process for pressure washing, one was released in July, one in August. We received three proposals throughout this period. The first one was incomplete and disqualified. We received another incomplete disqualified proposal, and then ultimately a responsive proposal for approximately $900,000 per year. And it's not listed here in the slide, but it's important to note that in conversations with Athens prior to the ultimate dissolution of that arrangement for pressure washing, they did quote us, I want to think, I say about $77,000 per month if they were continuing to do pressure washing services with us, which is in the neighborhood of that $900,000 mark. And so, you know, with having bid this item out twice, you know, we essentially determined that if we rebid it a third time, certainly we'd be getting proposals that were over half a million dollars per year for this work. And so we developed a plan for you to consider to insource these services on a long-term basis. And as council's aware, we've been doing this on a short-term basis for about a little over two months now with city crews. We have crews coming in about 4:00 in the morning to start this work. And our agreement with the Teamsters Union is currently right now, it's just, it's temporary, and they're agreeable until we get to some type of long-term arrangement. And so what we're proposing is to insource that work, stand up a new work group in Public Works, which consists of one maintenance supervisor, two maintenance worker ones, and one maintenance assistant. All those are full-time positions, and we think we can do this on an annual cost of about $385,000 per year. So the way that the economics of this break down, it's $385,000 for salary and benefits approximately per year on those four full-time positions, as well as there's some upfront vehicle costs that we would have to procure some vehicles just to make sure that we can get our personnel around the city. And that's $165,000. And so, yeah, a little bit about the benefits of the insourcing, we think that on the city's staff side, we can provide enhanced service levels, more flexibility, and more agility to get to areas that you might be technically out of scope for a contractor, but city workforce just knows that these are things that are good for our community and we can do. Another thing that really help us in maintaining the business districts is we're proposing four full-time positions, but if you're aware of how we do pressure washing, it starts about 4:00 in the morning and wraps up about 8:00 in the morning. That sounds like three or four part-time jobs objectively. The struggle we've got with creating these long-term part-time jobs is the turnover we have in our part-time ranks and trying to attract good people that are, quite frankly, looking for full-time work. It's a struggle. And so what the proposal for you today is for full-time positions, and what it will allow us to do is that at 8:00 in the morning, and we're talking Mondays through Fridays, the staff that is still on for the rest of their shift, they will either be, continue to do porter service, litter pickup, graffiti removal, that type of work in the business districts, or they'll be assigned to our parks and help us to take care of our parks in a more proactive manner, handling the detail level with, with the parks. And so, and not only with porter service type work in the parks, but irrigation, landscape maintenance oversight, and more timely repairs of playground equipment and fencing and whatnot. So we see that if we create this work group with full-time employees, we actually extend our reach beyond simple pressure washing and really deal with some other maintenance issues in the city to make sure that we've got just a really great class of maintenance going on. And so, you know, as proposed, for the balance of the fiscal year, the prorated amount for these new positions is about $225,000. We would need to buy the vehicles, and so the appropriation that's before you tonight, that request is $389,000, and then the ongoing cost is about $385,000. So our recommendation is you adopt the resolution establishing this new work group consisting of the supervisor and three full-time maintenance employees to insource these services and appropriate the $389,000 for the services for the remainder of the year. And I look forward to answering any questions you have about this.
Okay. I've got one to start off. So Athens used to do just Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I believe, down on the pier?
The pier, yes, but they were, I mean, they were seven-day-a-week provider, including the street sweeping work that was done. There was, there's also, pressure washing in downtown happens, I think, some sides of the street Monday, Wednesday, other sides of the street Tuesday, Thursday. And so different areas of the city and the business districts are in different schedules.
Okay. So will our own staff follow that same schedule?
Very similar. You know, this, this work group that we're proposing would be a Monday-through-Friday group. And so porter services, well, so pressure washing services, it would start at 4:00. That would generally be over around 8:00, and then porter services will continue throughout the balance of the day until 8:00 p.m. And so, I should have hit that earlier. So we really think we're going to be able to expand reach and have better levels of cleanliness and maintenance in the business districts with this, the extra resources that we'd be putting towards it.
So will that early morning crew, will they pick up the litter in the pier parking lots before they're, you know, generally before people come and park, and also the downtown streets while they're doing...
Yes, and before, before you arrive there, too.
Before I get there? Okay. Good. Thank you. You know, it's only coincidence. I just, I'm an early riser. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I'm sorry, Councilmember Lesser?
Yes. Eric, thank you for coming up with this proposal. Obviously, it's such a huge increase in cost since we last went out to bid this sort of service, and it's been examined by the sort of bids we're getting in, that it just isn't viable, and this isn't a good alternative. My question is, I want to make sure we're capturing all the costs that undertake this service. And just off the top of my head, I'm thinking, might there be increased liability insurance costs? Are there other ancillary costs we should be mindful of, even though this is far cheaper than going out to bid? That we should just be mindful of what this is going to cost us to undertake.
I'm certainly not an expert in liability and insurance, but I would assume that our current insurance carrier with our work comp and whatnot, I imagine at some point if you add more heads to the payroll, there are incremental costs there. As it relates to the actual liability of doing the work, it's similar work that we do now, and what we've been doing for years on a as-needed basis, and this would be more of a focused, regular, periodic-type schedule. So I'm not anticipating any real changes in that regard.
Eric, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Public comments? Thank you, Director Lee.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, council. Mayor Protem. Jill Lampkin, Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association. I am here to support Eric and the hard-working Public Works folks. We rarely have an opportunity to test something before we sign up for it, and I cannot tell you the difference in the level of service that we have experienced over the last couple of months since it's become city employees that have a vested interest in what happens. It's absolutely incredible. I went to Public Works, actually to their all-hands meeting last week to personally introduce to personally introduce myself and thank them for the, for the amazingly conscientious job that they are doing. I've had businesses who have told me how much better it is. Farmers market vendors have told me, oh, my gosh, it used to smell when I stood here. And it's all clean, this whole, like, what used to be the waterfall in Metlocks, it doesn't smell anymore. I mean, I can't even tell you. I sent Eric last week an email that said, "I experienced something that completely warmed my heart," where I saw a porter that was wearing his bright orange Public Works shirt downtown, sweeping on the sidewalk, looked up, made eye contact with a resident, had a nice little conversation. They laughed, and they both walked away smiling. And I went, that's exactly what we want. We want them to be ambassadors in our community. And they're doing a fantastic job. I'm super proud. And as a customer and a taxpayer, I can't imagine a better way to spend, to spend this money. So thank you to the Public Works team, and I hope you guys will consider this because it's amazing service.
Thank you. And I, and a lot of us echo that. Any, anybody else here? About online, Martha?
There are no raised hands via Zoom.
Okay. Colleagues, discussion? Councilmember Napolitano?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 23-0152, appropriate funds, and approve the positions. And I know that every, every election cycle, someone says, oh, they're adding more positions down into City Hall. And you know why? That's why. Because people have expectations. And to meet those expectations, you need people to do it. We've tried to do it with the folks we've had for years and years, but the expectations become greater. And this is actually an opportunity to reduce our costs. If you see, again, I spoke to this earlier, how much these new things are costing because of prevailing wage requirements, because of insurance requirements, because of so many things, and reporting requirements that these businesses now charge up the wazoo for, $900,000 to do pressure washing. We can do it for less than half that right now, and hopefully we can keep those down. But the service is better, and that's what matters, too. We could keep going, pay more, and get less in terms of service, quality of service. We're getting more, and, and it's obviously being appreciated. So this is a win. I, I say we run with it, and that's my motion, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And it's seconded by Councilmember Howard.
Yeah, and just, you know, a couple of quick comments. It's, it's so great. Thank you, Jill, for taking the time to sit through the entire meeting, come down, and so wholeheartedly endorse it. And for those who don't know, Jill will tell us when we're not living up to the expectations, which is good. I also had this experience as well about, I don't know, a month ago, I was walking on the pier, pretty early for me, like nine. But, but there was, like, dog excrement. You know, you're not supposed to walk dogs on the pier, but there was a giant pile, and I was so upset. And there were two guys, two Public Works guys, walking, you know, sort of, we're walking in the same direction, said, excuse me, you know, who would I call? This is my innocent question. I know the answer. Who would I call about taking care of this mess here? Like, oh, ma'am, we've made a note of it. We're going to go get the washer. We're going to take care of it. Yes, so it is. It's that, it's that pride of place. So, and thank you, Director Lee, for bringing this to us. That's, that's great. Good stuff.
Councilmember Lesser?
Just wanted to add to the compliments for Director Lee and the Public Works staff. You've really risen to the occasion here. We have high expectations in our community. We care about our strand and our pier and our streets and how they look and are downtown. And you can really see the difference since these staff have taken on this challenge. Appreciate you being creative and coming up with ultimately civilization that we need to bring this in-house. So just as Councilmember Napolitano indicated, no one likes adding the city headcount. But here's an instance where we can't really get this other than a substantially higher cost through, through an outside contractor. And I think we're going to get a far better result. So I'm in favor of the motion.
Great. Thank you all. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Franklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lesser? With Mayor Montgomery absent, motion passes 401.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on. Item N, City Council requests and reports, including AB 1234 reports.
Nothing for me.
I don't have any reports.
Anybody? No? Item number 26, considered request by Councilmember Lesser and Council...
I'll be the third vote.
Member Howard, third vote. Councilmember Napolitano, any future agenda items?
Yes.
Okay.
What do, this, I was moved by former Councilmember Hildy Stern talking about the LA versus Haight Community mural, mural art project program. And I'd like to discuss it at a future meeting.
I'll second that. We're reconsidering a couple of those and locations. I'm, I'm fine with talking about it.
Yeah, she had a different explanation for it, you know, was a different thing. So, great, thank you.
I'm sure it was a better explanation, but I'm willing to reconsider it.
All right, all right.
All right, you got your second on that. City manager report? Oh, I'm sorry, any other future agenda items?
No, but Siri had something, but I don't know what it was about.
I was just looking at Councilmember Lesser.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
He doesn't look like he has it.
Yeah, Siri started talking.
City manager report?
Yeah, I would just like to ask Tully Merzakani and our Community Development Director to talk briefly about some state legislation affecting housing that we want to bring to council's attention.
Thank you.
Tell us the good news.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Franklin and council members. Tully Merzakani and your Community Development Director here. The Governor of California recently concluded the 2023 State Legislative Session by signing or vetoing a variety of bills. One bill that staff would like to highlight is Senate Bill 423, sponsored by Scott Wiener. The bill was signed by the Governor on October 11, 2023, and goes into effect January 1, 2024, with one caveat to that date, which I will go into shortly. It is worth noting that the City Council had taken a position of opposition against this bill. SB 423 is particularly noteworthy in that it further limits local control over housing projects by strengthening and expanding the applicability of Senate Bill 35, which was passed in 2017. Council may recall that SB 35 required jurisdictions that have failed to meet their regional housing needs assessment, housing production targets, to ministerially and in a streamlined manner approve multifamily housing developments that met certain affordability, prevailing wage, and geographic requirements. While SB 423 includes a number of amendments to SB 35, I'll go ahead and quickly outline those amendments that are most relevant to the city. It extends the sunset date on SB 35 by 10 years, from January 1, 2026 to January 1, 2036. It revises the coastal zone development prohibition of SB 35 to allow for projects in specified urban coastal locations. The amended law would apply to the non-appellable portion of the city's coastal zone. This portion of the law, however, does go into effect on January 1, 2025, a year later than the remainder of the law. It revises the required affordability level for jurisdictions that have not made sufficient progress toward their above-moderate-income rena numbers. It requires determinations regarding compliance with applicable objective planning standards to be made by the planning director and removes the Planning Commission public oversight hearing provision. The only thing that Planning Commission would hold on to is design review if that city has a design review process. And local governments cannot require any of the following before approving a development that meets the requirements for a project, studies, information, or other materials that do not pertain directly to determining whether development is consistent with the objective planning standards applicable to the development. That concludes my summary, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Well, you know, I guess I would say that I think that we need to take a look at our codes and see what kind of standards we want, if we want development standards of a certain type for any of these developments. Because we want to avoid having boxes, you know, the cracker box development that happened in Long Beach and Ricondo and other places. So I think we should look long and hard at, you know, if we're going to be, if, if density is going to be thrust upon us, whether we want it or not, at least it can look better than what it looks like in a lot of other places.
Yeah, we could absolutely do that, Councilmember Napolitano. The only caveat to that is that under no net loss regulations, we cannot impose new standards that would have the effect of lowering the density, per se.
No, it's more of an aesthetic.
Design. It's more design, so it's not boxy and messy.
Steve, do you want that to be a future agenda item?
Sure.
Yes, second.
Okay.
And, and I'd like to see if the, if the same no-short-term rentals covenant applies to that kind of building as well, since the state's goal is to increase family housing and not short-term rental housing.
It wouldn't apply in the coastal zone, right?
Well, it...
Coastal Commission already told us.
This is on the agenda, but yes, just the general principle that if the state's trying to provide housing, they're not trying to prevent commercial rentals.
Right.
This is not a topic on the agenda tonight.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further report.
Okay. City attorney report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, any informational items? Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting to November 21st at 5:00 p.m.
Is that, okay, all right.
You notice I never really...